She's very organized, she's very good.
So we decided, she's very organized, she's very good.
She is very good.
We do have it on next door. Again, folks, we'll be broadcasting live in the senior center for extra space. We never know how many people are gonna be here and we wanted to make sure this one was live and on camera as well. So if you feel more comfortable, there is seating in there, you will be able to see and speak in here if you'd like to.
I will call the meeting to order at six thirty-four. Our, hello everyone. Our chairman is caught in traffic, he's on his way, so as vice chairman, I will start the meeting. Remind everyone, this meeting is being digitally recorded live, so in the course of discussions and everything, keep that in mind as you are speaking or expressing your opinions. With that, we'll begin, is anyone here for open session?
Where is Laura?
Right here, yeah, your, your open session.
Yeah?
Yeah.
What a fun topic.
Well, I gotta say, from the email today, I wasn't sure if you wanted to speak.
Electric vehicle?
Yes.
Just ask for, just ask for open session.
The whole crowd's here for you.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, should I be addressing the board or the crowd or the others?
The board, just in the update you sent today, I assume you wanted to say.
Hello, board.
Hi.
Laura Foley, 12 Pitcherville Road. As many of you know, I have started the Keep Hubbard's Soon Beautiful Townwide Cleanup Day. And it coincides with a Saturday that's closest to Earth Day, where I encourage people in the town to clean up garbage along the sides of the road and deliver it to the rec field where there's a waiting dumpster. That event also includes a scout recycling, two scout recycling events. One is held by the Girl Scouts and they collect deposit bowls and cans and they use the money that they earn from that on their scouting adventures. And the other one is with Scouts BSA, which you used to know as Boy Scouts. They do an electronic recycling fundraiser where people bring in old electronics equipment, appliances, scrap metal, things like that. And they accept money for recycling those and that gets turned around into their scouting ventures. Always in keeping, or in keeping with this theme of recycling, cleaning things up, I thought it would be fun to have an electric vehicle exhibition there, an event. And the way that works is, are you familiar with any kind of an auto show like they have at Kimball's in the summertime? So what happens is Kimball bring their nice cars to a show and they'll put the hoods up, they'll put the trunks up, they polish them up. And they're basically there for the public to admire and to gawk at and to talk about. And in this case, the electric vehicle event would also be a driving event in that people would bring their Teslas, their Volts, their Leafs, their other hybrid or all-electric vehicles. And the purpose of this event is to demonstrate what electric vehicles are all about. And in, it's not, it's not a sales event, so they're not trying to push any one kind of car. They just want to educate the public on what it's like to own an electric vehicle, what it's like to rely on charging stations and getting the feeling of being driven in one of these vehicles. Kellyanne has said that she would, we're still in talks, I think, that she would like to have that or be able to have that event at her, in the parking lot of Go Green Recycling. And what I need from the board is to find out what the next steps of this would be. They are going to be offering pizza, they're not going to be selling pizza, so I don't know if they need a food handler license or a vendor's license. They're not selling anything, it's an exhibition. And the person who has convened these has done hundreds of them. So he's been, he's been doing this all along without any trouble with any organization that he partners with to do this. So this is to you, what are the next steps to making this happen?
Well, thanks for doing this. Nice little go-to on your email. Clearly, he responded pretty quickly to your pizza thing. So as you just said, he's done this many, many times in different ways. There are certain things that I'm sure the town would be asking questions about, such as whether or not he has to provide certain insurances and, and I don't mean assurances, but I mean it's just certain insurances that he's got to be taking people for drives and that sort of thing. So I think those are the sort of questions now that, you know, you've come here that we'll probably put, put together a short list of them to get some answers on that to, to find out if he's, if he's got quick responses, which he probably does 'cause he's probably been asked the same question a million times. As far as the, a permit for the common victory license, I don't know. I mean, what are your thoughts there, Ryan, on, on whether or not, you know, there's gonna be some food provided at no cost? You know, there are food provided at no cost at many things, right?
Yeah, so we have to coordinate with the Board of Health. I'm sure they're familiar with that, having done it before. So if, if the board is in support of we being partnering with this, we will make sure that the permitting is handled and the insurance questions are answered so the event can happen. But we wanted to make sure there was interest in a partnership on the town side and then we'll get all of those things handled, it shouldn't be very difficult.
Sure.
Okay, so it sounds like we'll be hammering out minutia that we'll need to continue to communicate with each other to make sure it can happen, right?
Yeah, that and advertising, right? So you're gonna wanna use whatever sort of mechanisms we have in place, like the flashing signboard in advance of that or any other sort of signs that I guess just get us what you need from us, unless there's, you know, anyone who doesn't think this is a good idea and, and we, you know, hopefully can provide whatever, whatever support you need.
Okay.
As far as other questions, you did sort of say up there what other things the town could do. You know, I, I hadn't really come up with anything specific to, to do that besides it is gonna be a busy day, right? So whether or not it makes sense for us to have a police detail there, you know, obviously not, not paid for by the facility, who's coming to provide this service to us 'cause that would not be a friendly thing to do, I think.
In the, the one that Henry and I attended in the spring, there were enough, there was enough gap between the cars exiting and entering that there was no need to stop traffic, that they were just driving out as if they were exiting a parking lot ordinarily. So there isn't a, a huge influx of traffic in and out. And he estimated that with the size of the space, that they could probably get ten electric vehicles in there.
Okay, cool. And as far as, you know, whether or not we would need to be using the town land as well or are you proposing all of it within there?
My thought was that the rec field parking lot would be taking, would be doing the recycling and cleanup.
Yep.
So the dumpster and the scouts. And that Kellyanne's parking lot would be the electric vehicle because I don't want little kids to be where there's a lot of traffic going in and out. It's, it's, we try to keep it so that the traffic flows evenly coming in one end of the rec field and out the other. And people drive slowly there, but I think that it would be much better to have a separate event, or rather, a separate venue that's close by, but that doesn't have all the kids wandering around.
Cool, and so, you know, silly things like, of course, it'll just be done during daylight hours and that sort of thing. Those are the things that'll probably just go into the, the sort of final documents, however formal they may or may not be, just to make sure everyone's on the same page about all those little things as well.
Okay.
So whose, whose vehicles are these?
These are members of the general public. So much like a car show at Kimball Farms would just be an open call, cruise night. So an open call for anyone who has a cool car to come and park it there. This is a group of electric vehicle owners, so anyone who answers the call to come to Hubbard's Soon for that day would show up.
Is it a club or something?
Yes, car club.
And these people just take people for rides in their cars?
Yes. Yes, and he has, the organizer has said that that, usually the insurer, well, in every case, the insurance that the driver owns as a, or rather, that he has on the vehicle covers the liability in case that there's an accident involved. But he's, he's never had one, never had an accident.
You gonna bring the caddy?
I guess I do.
Yeah, sure.
If that is the case and they are using their own personal insurance, I need to have an insurance be listed.
As additional insured.
Right, or have a one-day policy for that particular day listing me as also insured.
Okay.
But, okay.
Which I'm sure that you still as well, whether it's a town or whether, whether it's a private.
Under their impression, but then when you said they use their own personal insurance on their own vehicles, then...
My understanding from the person who organizes it is that it's more like an aficionado, a friend driving another friend to see what the car's all about. Because they're not doing a formal sales event, they're not requiring people to register for it, no manufacturers of cars are going to be there, so it's more like a friendly show, show and tell.
Yeah, but for her, she needs insurance in case some kid trips, falls and bangs his head on the ground.
Right.
Okay.
Cool, questions?
Nope.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, sure, yeah, anyone else here for open session? That's a no?
Okay.
Do you want me to sort of take over chair?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely, sure, okay. All right, so announcements, Ryan, who we got?
So as home to the best special events in central Mass, ready to introduce the next one again, frozen assets. And Katie's in the other room in case I say anything wrong, so. After the real success of the Hubbard's Soon light fight, moving right into frozen assets, which is a chance for folks to guess when the outhouse on the Country Hen Pond falls through the ice. So that is starting now, if people wanna make their guesses. It's a recommendation or donation of twenty dollars if you wanna participate, but anybody can participate regardless of whether or not you make the donation. And it, it will be tracked on social media, we'll follow it and hopefully it falls through soon. We don't have a long winter, it's like our version of the Groundhog. So where do you go for those tickets? Well, I would say you can definitely come here, there's a variety of businesses that I'll put out, just can't remember off the top of my head, on.
Katie?
You can go to the Country Trail, you can go to Broberg Insurance and you can actually get, pick up some free calendars, she has two you can get. You can get them at the Pizza Palace, you can get them at the Hub Town Diner, you can get them at Giacomo's or you can get them at Prue Family Financial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why we pay her well.
Okay, sounds good, is that it for announcements?
Yep.
So I see here, okay. So what I think a lot of people are probably here for tonight, we've got our first item of new business, which is the Proposed Marijuana Establishment Community Outreach Meeting, which, which, which begins now. We have a joint meeting tonight, we've got the Hubbard, we have a quorum here for the Hubbard's Soon Planning Board?
Everybody.
Okay, sounds good, thanks everyone for coming there. And I guess, you know, Ryan, I don't know exactly had to set the table for us here, but would you?
So, to set the table, the, the purpose of the community outreach meeting is to inform the community about a potential or proposed marijuana establishment. So the, the folks who are, who are trying to establish the business are the ones who actually run the meeting. But our bylaws, our zoning bylaws, say that this meeting will be held jointly with the selectmen and the planning board, so it made sense to have a regularly scheduled selectmen's meeting. This meeting is actually run by Mr. Schmidt, who'll introduce himself.
Thanks to you.
This is his meeting to introduce himself and the concept to the community being held at the selectmen's meeting, so.
And one other thing, if you wouldn't mind, just, just let people know and please name and chime in, but just sort of to date what, what's been done as far as contact to different town boards?
Sure, and I'm, I'm sure you'll speak to that as well, but Mr. Schmidt has met with the planning board in a basic level. No permitting, meetings have been done. This is one of many steps that's required in order to, to secure a CCC license in order to have this type of establishment in town. So this is, again, just a outreach meeting to do introductions and answer questions, which has a specific format.
And then came before the Board of Selectmen during our last meeting or one of our last meetings?
Two minutes ago, yeah.
As an informational, for, for, basically answering a lot of questions for us too, that we had sort of a preliminary step and this is the next one.
So this meeting is for that, for information. And next steps would be to engage in agreements and permits where there's statutory obligations that need to be followed for this to, to come to fruition.
Okay.
Got enough setup for you?
All right, so if you wouldn't mind just sort of introducing yourself as you, as you sort of begin.
All right, hi, everybody, I'm Dylan Schmidt, so I'm just gonna kind of lead this tonight. I, I'm here with Bowie and Mary. So there's three addresses that we're, we're going to do a community host meeting all at once. The reason we did that is so we only come here once. So it's actually three separate businesses, so, and I, I'd start off that way. But, so what I'm gonna do tonight is kinda go over what the HCA is, you know, what's the HCA, the Community Outreach Meeting, I should say, let me start over, sorry. So I'll go over what the Community Outreach Meeting is, I'll go over what it's not supposed to be. I'll kinda go over, you know, our steps that we have to take with the town going forward, kinda give you an idea of our licensing process. And then I have eleven bullet points, I just have to read, I'm just gonna read them in, in a row. And then after that, we'll just ask me anything you want. So with that, I'll kind of start, so.
And let me just jump in real quick, so, so because, you know, there are a lot of us here and we, we, we need to keep this as, as sort of orderly as possible and I'm sure this, this, this item is, is, has a lot of interest and a lot of emotion. So as we would normally do with items such as this, just please get recognized by the chair, which will be me, and that by, by raising your hand. If I need to, I'll be writing, you know, names down or I'll be writing what you're wearing down 'cause if I don't know your name, and I will get to you, okay? We will do that, we'll take whatever time we need, but just, that's the, the way we're gonna do it, okay?
So the Community Outreach Meeting, we have to hold this for the Cannabis Control Commission, the CCC. And basically, I have to go over eleven items. The town and the bylaw wants me to answer questions, which we're more than happy to do. So that's basically just, you know, what our plans are. It is not a talk about marijuana, I know that sounds, doesn't make sense, but we're not here to talk about marijuana, we're not here to talk about legalization of marijuana, we're definitely not here to talk about the two thousand and eight bylaw you guys passed. So we're just, I just kinda wanna keep the expectations. After we do the Community Outreach Meeting, we're going to hopefully engage in what's called a host community agreement, where we basically agree to pay three percent of our sales with some minimums to the town. And then the big meeting where everyone gets to come and really tell me what they feel is the special permit meeting. So we'll do a townwide special permit meeting, definitely a bigger room than this. And that's where everybody really tells, tells me how they feel about marijuana. And then after we do that, we can get a building permit and then we can basically start putting up the building and getting our licensing. That was pretty, pretty, any questions? But we're gonna, we're gonna move on to my eleven things real quick. Just to kinda get them to go off my phone here. And the CCC actually requires us step by step to do this, so I'm gonna read there what they want me to read, then I'm gonna answer. So the location of the proposed marijuana establishments. So it's at fifty-six Gardner Road, sixty-nine Gardner Road, and then twenty-six Worcester Road. What types of marijuana establishments will be sighted at the location? That is going to be at twenty-six Worcester Road, it's gonna be a ten thousand square foot outdoor cultivation, which will probably be outdoor covered by just some simple greenhouses. That will probably go for about seventy-five days. So New England's a real rough area to grow outdoor marijuana because of the mold, so probably use what's called automatics. So instead of having a planting in May and a harvest in October, you probably plant in June and have a harvest, you know, seventy-five days later. So a short cycle. At fifty-six Gardner Road, we would have a retail store, as well as we're gonna attempt a outdoor cultivation for possibly a season. And then we're gonna move into a, when I say we, it's the three companies. We're gonna move into a greenhouse, so in a closed facility. I will, excuse me, hold this up, so when I say greenhouse, there's your quick peek, that's all you get. So when I say greenhouse, it is green, so we can order whatever color side we want, we picked green. And then basically, it's, you know, a typical greenhouse that, you know, you can see through the top, but the sides are clear. Blackout curtains, and we can get to the location, I'll do that afterwards. So basically, at fifty-six Gardner Road, the end idea is to have a fifty thousand square foot greenhouse and, you know, out of that greenhouse, you have twenty-five hundred of it, would be a retail store. So there'd be no more outdoor cultivation on that site. At sixty-nine Gardner Road, possibly an outdoor cultivation, just to start to help with the money, but most likely, it would just be a fifty thousand square foot greenhouse. That greenhouse would be, it's buried into the woods, so you'd actually never see it. You would know what it looks like because at fifty-six Gardner Road, it'd be the exact same greenhouse. So if you're familiar with where the wood stove shop is, there's already that big greenhouse there. So basically, where that big greenhouse would be, would be a better greenhouse. So those are the type of establishments. And again, you can ask me any questions you want as soon as I get through this, all right. Is the proposed marijuana establishments allowed under current zoning bylaw ordinances or is a zoning amendment required to allow it to go there? So currently, I think it was two thousand and eighteen, the town passed the bylaw for the marijuana establishments, so they are all allowed under current zoning. The next one, is the proposed marijuana establishments allowed by law or does it require local zoning permitting, what permits are required? Not the expert in Hubbard's Soon here, but we're gonna go for our special permit, the Board of Health has to sign off, then the planning board has to sign off, and then anybody else in town has to sign off as well. The police have to sign off, obviously, that's one of our big sign offs. They sign off on our security plan, which I'm not gonna tell any of you about, no offense. But we, we go over with the chief of police and they have to sign off on it. And then what happens is the CCC comes in and they go over everything the town has gone over and then they do the final sign off. Is there a local Board of Health regulation pertaining to the marijuana establishments? That will be part of the special permitting process. So just like anywhere else, if we have a sewer or well and all that good stuff. Does the proposed location comply with the five hundred foot buffer zone from existing public or private school buildings, K through twelve, question mark? Do local bylaws or ordinances create a smaller buffer zone? So it doesn't create a small buffer zone and there's no K through twelve schools anywhere around. Is the applicant, if the applicant is moving into existing building or building a new one, will the premises comply with the security requirements set forth in nine-three-five CMR five hundred? Yes, each property will follow the security requirement set forth in nine-three-five CMR five hundred. Sorry, that one makes me laugh. What steps will be taken by the marijuana establishment to prevent diversion of minors? This is an important one. So cultivation, we don't sell to the general public, we only sell to other retail stores, so it kinda becomes their problem. At the retail store, at fifty-six Gardner Road, it's where it kinda comes our problem. So we don't sell to minors, we only sell to people twenty-one and up. For the minors, I take that more meaning, you know, little kids. So all of our, you know, packaging is done child secure, you know, officially labeled, you know, follow the CCC guidelines. What we are doing as a company, hopefully in this town, and we're doing it in Templeton, we're gonna hopefully be doing it in Phillipsden and our other, other town, is we're gonna be giving away the people that live in the town, or I can't say we can give it away, might do a special price for Hubbard's Soon residents. So we're doing it with Templeton, Phillipsden, Hossie Rollston. And we'll do it for Hubbard's Soon where people come in and buy edibles, they'll go home with like a lockbox. So that's the big difference for us is the black market, you didn't, you don't see these edibles, they're not around. But if your pet's getting an edible, like, they're gonna die possibly, but if they're young, they'll survive. And if your kids get it, it's gonna be trouble in the hospital. So we wanna, that's what we're doing for our communities that we go into is give everyone who's doing edibles and even, you know, marijuana flowers, is a lockbox. So that's, that's like one of the big things we're doing to try to keep it away from minors. And next one. Information demonstrating how the applicant intends to ensure that the location will not constitute a nuisance to the community as defined by law. So we're gonna follow all the bylaws that the town of Hubbard's Soon has. Once we get our greenhouses up, they're fully enclosed. If anyone is worried about the light at night, so our, our greenhouses have lights in them, thousand watt lights, just like regular growth facilities. So in the winter, you know, say all of a sudden clouds come in real quick, we just have automatic things that will just turn the lights on. And to protect our neighbors, and marijuana grows on twelve and twelve cycles sometimes, we have blackout curtains, so we can press a button and this entire greenhouse just blacks out. So in other towns that we're in, you know, we've got agreements, in the middle of the winter, you know, at eight o'clock at night, we're turning on our blackout curtains. So it sounds like we're doing this all for the public, but we really do it for ourselves. It keeps, no offense, it keeps it in heat by putting these up and then marijuana flowers on a twelve and twelve cycle. So in the middle of the summer, to keep it twelve and twelve, you know, we'll shut these black cur, uh, shut the curtains, the blackout curtains. So at night, you basically won't see this on the road. So definitely at sixty-nine Gardner, we'll go definitely, you know, a hundred percent black at night, so they'll never see us and should never hear us, unless we're yelling. And then, we're moving on here. So yeah, so basically, it won't be a nuisance, we'll follow all the rules that Hubbard's Soon has. A plan for how the marijuana establishment will positively impact the community. If the applicant is a marijuana retailer, be aware of whether the municipality has passed a local tax option, prepare to answer questions. So this is the last question. So I believe it's gonna be three percent in this town and what we like to do is give a minimum to each town for each specific marijuana establishment type. So for the retail store, you know, this is all negotiation still, but what we're willing to agree to is what we do in other towns. Just so everyone knows, every town that I go into has to have the same HCA 'cause every town has something that says if a better town gets a deal or a town gets a better deal, they gotta match it. So basically, we offer the same thing every town, it's, the retail store is fifty thousand dollars a year minimum and we do three percent of sales. You know, Hubbard's Soon, it's a great location being on sixty-eight, you have the traffic. And, you know, we really believe once there's four or five hundred retail stores in, in, in the state, you know, it's not gonna be like you see with long lines right now and it's gonna turn into a liquor store. So people are just gonna stop on their way home, just like they do with liquor stores, or in the morning, 'cause you don't have to keep our product cold. So we're on Route sixty-eight, so that does give some permanent traffic. But you know, there's three going in Gardner, I believe there's three going in Gardner. There's one going near, you know, the ninety-nine restaurant, I got one in Templeton, one in Phillipsden, there's three in Orange, three in Athol, and there's three in Lynchington. So by the time we open our store, these are, they're just gonna be everywhere. So I don't think this, it's gonna be a huge moneymaker for the town, so I cap it, if, if things go well, maybe a hundred thousand a year. But we're offering fifty thousand minimum a year. You know, if sales pick up, obviously, it kinda gets more. The real money's in the cultivation and the manufacturing. I'm sorry, I missed a big point. On each of the locations, there's manufacturing license as well. A manufacturing license basically means we can turn product into oils, like you hear about the vapes that everyone's happy with, or edibles, or things along those nature. So the real money's in cultivation and manufacturing. With two fifty thousand square foot greenhouses, which is the max the state allows, you know, you're gonna produce three thousand pounds a month. If the price is a thousand dollars a pound, you got three percent of that, which is ninety thousand. So, you know, with the two greenhouses going, you know, it's basically, you know, we're offering, oh, I should tell you the minimum. We're, we're offering on each of those a minimum of fifty thousand dollars for the first ten thousand square feet and then every ten thousand square feet after that's twenty-five thousand. So if we get to fifty thousand square feet, it's a hundred and fifty thousand bucks on each side of the road, which is the town minimum. You know, if, if it's up and running and it's still a viable business, that means if they haven't federally legalized yet and things haven't gone crazy. You know, we're getting a thousand dollars a pound, that should give the town a minimum of a million dollars a year in tax revenue. And so you do the prices, right now the prices are at four thousand a pound all day long. So if we come out in the first couple of years, it's two to three thousand a pound, you know, the town will get two to three million bucks a year. We don't ask for very much in terms of services, we'll just be in the woods all left alone. We, you know, we've got lots of cameras and security. So that's basically it for in terms of the benefits to the town and then the town can decide what negatives there are. But from a financial standpoint, that's kinda what we're offering the town. And that's it for my speech, I know it went fast, I'm trying to get through it. So if anybody wants to ask me questions, I'll answer any- And that's it for my speech, I might run fast, I'm trying to get through it, so, if anybody wants to ask me questions, I'll answer any of them.
Alright, so we'll start here at the, at the table, if you guys don't mind, and, uh, see if we have any questions for them first, and then we'll. We'll open it up like we talked about, I guess I'll, I'll sorta, sorta kick us off here. Can you just explain to us, um, I guess first off, uh, what your company is, why there are three companies?
Yeah.
And, and sorta, how, how that all works, and, and who's actually in charge, and what other facilities that you have, and the three companies have, either together or separately?
Alright, well, once there, um, alright, so yeah, there's three different companies, so I'm from Royalston Farm, in Royalston. Um, and what I'm trying to do here is come in with an outdoor grow. And I'm just really interested to do it, because the town has a bylaw that lets me do it, um, and I really wanna come and put an outdoor grow. I think at fifty-six Gardner would be my number one choice, um. What I've done in the past is I have a host community agreement with Royalston signed, and we've just poured our concrete for our walls. So we got a ten thousand square foot building going over there. Um, I have a host community agreement with Templeton, and I got a, uh, two hundred thousand square foot building going over there. With a hundred thousand being a manufacturing building, and a hundred thousand being cultivation, and then I got a retail store going over there as well. In Phillipsden, I got the same thing going, I got cultivation, manufacturing, and retail, so I'm definitely doing the retail store there. Someone else might be doing cultivation there, and then, I'm, uh, also trying for a store in the city, so we're very close to getting that. Um, and so that is, you know, kinda where my company falls in. I'm really interested in kinda doing an outdoor grow just once, and then I'm gonna, cause I'm just really interested in doing that. And I would put it in the wood stove, the old wood stove place would be our dry cure, so we're gonna go in there, rehab it. You know, dry our stuff from our outdoor, and then knock the building over afterwards, which doesn't make any sense. Um, and then, once I leave the picture, um, then Bowie Berto comes in, from Paper Crane. Um, that's Bowie, and so Bowie's gonna put in, you know, the retail store and the fifty thousand square foot. Um, greenhouse, and then across the street, you put in a fifty thousand square foot greenhouse. So that obviously, we can bury, you know, no one's ever gonna see that or hear it, or know it's there. And this obviously is just gonna replace the, uh, the greenhouse that's there. We're gonna have to, I'm assuming the town won't let us keep the building, so we'll just take everything that's down there, and we'll end up with just one building here. Um, and then Mary over there, um, from Midland Gardens, um, she is going to start with, uh, a ten thousand square foot. Outdoor, um, oh, I'm sorry, and Bowie also has a retail store in the city building, um, where most of his product will be sold. Um, and, uh, so Mary's gonna be starting with the ten thousand square foot outdoor, and kinda start from there. And then, there's another town that Mary's gonna go into and put the same kind of a ten thousand square foot building I have going up in Royalston. So they're getting their feet a little wet, and I'm kind of already in it. Um, so I expect my license for Royalston and Templeton, uh, we expect provisional licenses next month. Um, and then, you know, we'll, we'll start in Templeton pretty quick, but Templeton's gonna be my, my flagship. Also, I'll be at a hundred thousand, well, we have a two hundred thousand square foot building going in. They have sewer and water, it's very nice over there. But I love this town too. I love this town too, but I'm getting out of the way, so basically, I'm kind of, you know, helping my friends here, and then kinda getting out of the way, and I get my experiment. And then my buddy gets the yellow house, so that's, and that's it.
So, so as a follow up to that, um, i- is this for you, is this a all-three-or-nothing deal? Uh, meaning the three facilities or the three properties that you've talked of, um, for whatever reason. In the event that, that, um, one of them doesn't work out, or two of them don't work out, or, or whatever, is this, are you in town to do all-three-or-none, or, or not?
Well, there, I mean, if Mary says, see you later, then, see you later, I guess she doesn't like us anymore, but no, we're all coming in. You know, I'm definitely coming in, this is awesome for the outdoor experience, um, but no, we're, we're independent, you know, in terms of.
Okay.
Making, and they can make their own decisions, so.
Yeah, I had, I had a question.
Go ahead.
Just wondering about jobs, I realize they'll be the construction jobs, but after the, the build is complete, what are you, um, thinking for employees? How many people, five, ten?
Um, well, when we first start, we're gonna start, I mean, like any, any company, we're not corporate backed, by the way, so it's not like we have tons of money in the bank. Uh, we're gonna start at ten thousand square feet, and we're gonna go from there, um, and then we're basically just gonna kinda keep building. Um, for Ron, feel free, there's one of our growers in the back, but, you know, I think it's, you know, five to seven people per ten thousand. So maybe, each fifty thousand square foot facility has, do my math here, maybe fifty to seventy employees. So that's, that's something we're also thinking about is parking, um, so that's why the buildings at fifty-six probably have to come, so we're parking in front and greenhouse in the back. So yeah, I think it's like fifty to sixty, if they do a manufacturing building, you know, that, that adds another. You know, if there's a manufacturing component, uh, that they really do, everyone just kinda gets the manufacturing license to get it. Um, but if they really do manufacturing, you're adding like another fifty jobs, thank you. But that's a full, you know, fifty thousand square feet, and then the outdoors, you know, eighty days long at max, seventy-five. Maybe you trim for a couple weeks, so you're basically just bringing people from other, other, other areas.
Um, so what, what, uh, I guess either statutory wise, which, which would be meaning mandatory, um, uh, or just recommended. What, what sort of things like, um, traffic studies and, and other sorts of, uh, requirements like that are, are gonna be done or need to be done? You know, during this process?
Um, yeah, it's completely up to the town, and we'll do whatever the town wants, uh, every other town I've gone into is, where I've had to do a traffic survey for retail. Um, cultivation, we really haven't had to do one, um, you know, cause we're starting ten thousand, by the time we build to fifty thousand. You know, by the time you start and build, it's a year, year and a half, so you try to get the first ten thousand square feet up, get, get it going, and then you just kinda expand. Um, does that answer the question?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that does. Uh, and I, and I just have one more here, about, um, you, you alluded to it a little bit, when you were talking about, uh, buffer zones and infringements on them, or whether or not there were any. Um, within the three properties that we're talking about now, um, uh, just, just so we're clear, are, are, are any of them? Um, outside of, uh, sort of the normal, um, uh. Where you would need a variance or not, and go to zoning board of appeals, right off the bat, that you know of?
No, no, so basically, everything we're doing is, is within the town bylaws. Um, you know, the town allows for fifty thousand square foot greenhouse, so that's what we're doing, and in the residential area allows you up to ten thousand square feet of outdoor. And that's on a thirty-two acre piece of property, so, having a one point three million square feet, we're gonna put a little dinky ten thousand square feet.
So no, so none of your facilities, uh, or plans necessarily, are you proposing to propose? Uh, a modification to any of the existing approved by town meeting bylaws?
Nope, so everything that we looked at, we pretty much, um, you know, straightforward, we just have to go through the normal, or the, there's a. Don't have it memorized, but there's a special permit process we obviously have to go through, and then I think there was an addition of, of something we had to do for the, for the marijuana part. I think it, it was an environment, I just said, maybe it's an environmental impact, because it's more than five thousand square feet, I think I read something there. So it's like an extra part we'll have to do, but besides that, I, you know, we're gonna be within the bylaws that you currently have.
Okay, and, and, so just so everybody knows, a- and you mentioned it before, because you talked about when, when sort of the special permit consideration. Sort of comes up, that, that's really when the discussion fires up, because, I mean, that, that's really the town's opportunity there, um. Uh, to, to make sure that, um, all the questions are, are asked, and then all the conditions that are placed into. Uh, uh, what would be an approved permit are, are placed in, so that you guys have to comply with all that, is that right?
Yeah, the special permits were, everyone really gets at it, let's put it that way. Yeah, that's a big one, where all the restrictions from the town and everything kinda gets worked out, so. And I think there'll be, you guys peer review as well?
Uh, well, yes.
Yeah, so we'll start that process with you, we will.
Okay, well, anyone else have anything at the table here for the moment? No, alright, well, uh.
Any board questions?
What's that?
Can.
And Benny Boy will be next, Alice, um, go ahead.
I just had a question, um, I think that marijuana lots maybe has wetlands, have you looked at wetlands?
Yeah, so, um, the one across the street, sixty-nine, that's wetland city, yeah, tons of wetlands. So we've got the, uh, they've already did, we've got like a, someone, they've got unbelievable plans for it already. So they must've had, must've spent an awful lot of money on those plants, dude, I mean, they're like the best plants I've ever seen, for like wetlands, and then they. It's, they already had like a perk test, they've got a septic system design, and they're supposed to put a pretty big house there. Um, so it's, it looks pretty good, from like, what I'm looking at in terms of the wetlands, like the wetlands, uh, if you've ever been back there, the, um. You know, they're held back by the, uh, stone walls. Held back by the stone walls, so, what we're thinking is just, kinda beautiful flat land.
Okay, so you're aware of them, and you've got.
Yeah, then we're basically, right on, there's like a line for commercial and residential right in that property, so we're kinda forced more to the front of that property, which is fine. Saves me on electricity.
Okay, and then another question about wells, is, obviously, we have no.
Yeah, yeah.
Public water supply, so, do you recycle the water for?
When we get big, we can recycle the water, so we're, we're, we're really, really, uh, regulated. So if you were a farmer, like, at your house or something, you were just farming, and not selling it to somebody, you could just correct, collect our rainwater and reuse it. We can collect our rainwater, and we can save fifty percent of our water usage, but it costs a lot of money, so we have to then get it tested. Treat it and get it tested again, because people are putting our product in their body. Uh, so it's not that simple for us, but we can collect like dehumidify, uh, like from the dehumifiers, we even reclaim a lot of what we use up to like fifty percent. We don't do that at ten thousand square feet, but at fifty thousand square feet, we will, for sure, um, you know, guarantees, but that's kind of the, the, the plan.
Okay.
Is that we can reuse, so.
During the last planning board meeting, you mentioned your financial backing for this project, can you provide that detail again?
Um, yeah, so, it's probably, it's probably changed since I've been here. Um, so basically, I used to work at a company called Oracle, and I was leaving, retiring. Uh, getting kicked out, cause I was too old, but, um, there was about fifteen people in my company that all threw money at me, to go start my little project. Um, and then now we're up to, there's twenty-four owners total. Um, so that's kind of where our seed money came from, then I threw in all the money I could possibly get at it. Uh, and then we basically, you know, went out and kinda sold some more of our company, uh, and then basically, I borrowed the rest. That's on a nice little loan. Um, so we're not like owned by any corporation or anybody, like I, I, on, at least on my company, I have, you know, fifty-five percent of the company. Uh, they have a lot more percentage of their company as well.
Can you give us some details in terms of what your actual background is, in terms of, uh, from your professional career, prior to working even with Oracle?
Yeah, so in ninety-eight, I graduated from Boston College, that's school in Massachusetts. Um, and then I went to work at Merrill Lynch for a couple of years, took a deal and went to Smith Barney, so I was a financial consultant, like stockbroker. Then Fidelity came up with those commercials, and then people really thought they could trade themselves. Um, so we went through a different, we started our own brokerage firm after that, um, for like five years. And then when I turned thirty, I thought I would retire. And then I, uh, bought a house in Royalston in two thousand and six, um, I thought I was gonna retire. Wife had a couple of kids, couldn't retire, um, and then I basically started a couple of companies, like, uh, golfing companies. So I did like New England Golf Magazine, did a golf credit card, and then I decided health insurance was awesome for three kids. Uh, so in two thousand and fifteen, I went to work at Oracle, and I lasted there for four years, and then, now I'm marijuana man.
Can I ask, I mean.
Yeah.
This is, this is obviously a big project.
Yep.
And as a project, uh, longevity is a very important element on this here. You have been jumping around quite a bit, what can you state for the town in terms of your longer term plans for something of this nature? Are you really looking at this here as a short term venture, and then what are your plans thereafter?
Yeah, so I'm pretty much in it to win it, um, so I kind of, the plan that I have with our head grower, we have one of our head growers here, is. You know, we're basically just gonna grow marijuana until it doesn't make sense to grow it anymore. Um, so, at certain point in time, Canada will take over and other people will take over, and then we'd just be out of business. Um, so it's not gonna be us really determining that, it's basically the, uh, demand supply. Um, but yeah, I mean, I, I held a job at a financial firm for thirteen years, and I made enough money to age thirty to retire. Um, so, I don't know if I caught it jumping around, but after that, I did jump around, I did, uh. I did, I just, just started a couple of companies, um, but yeah, so no, we're gonna be here for a while, I'm only gonna be here for one season. Um, but then Bowie's gonna be here for a while, uh, to put up that kind of a greenhouse is gonna cost, you know, six to seven million bucks. Um, so we're gonna put an investment in this town, and then, we're gonna stick with it, um, so.
The final question I have is this in regards to the manufacturing facility, manufacturing, as I understand it, has different processes by which you do the extraction. Some of which use actually volatile compounds, those compounds potentially being compounds that can be explosive and things of that nature. What methodologies are you thinking of utilizing for not only the processing, but the also the extraction? And are the facilities that you're planning on putting this in, are they suitable currently as they are s- uh, in their present state? In order to be able to, uh, for you to undertake that kind of a process?
Alright, um, I'm gonna try to answer this.
Okay.
I grow, might have to come up here, but, so, I did, and I know you went over this and wanted me to send you an answer, I sent the answer.
Reiterating it.
Yeah, did, uh, did you get that at all, or?
I did not.
Alright, so I sent it to, I think it was Christine, or I sent it to somebody, I thought it'd, you know, go to everybody, but, uh. So basically, we're gonna use two methods to start off with, uh, one of them is bubble hash, uh, and. Feel free to correct me, but bubble hash is, uh, basically, um, you know, you're taking the marijuana and you're putting it into ice water. So there's no, you know, volatile chemicals or anything. Um, the second method we use, it's called a, uh, rosin press, uh, so basically, just think of a press at your house. Uh, except this press is super special, where the plates, you know, can heat up to like two hundred and twenty degrees. Uh, you put all the marijuana that you might have thrown out, or you just wanna make really good stuff, and you put it in a, a sleeve, and you. You press it down and create about, you know, fifteen thousand pounds of pressure per square inch. And with the pressure and the heat, you squeeze out the THC, uh, so you can make like seventy percent, you know, THC oil. By just using heat and pressure, um, so, I think what you're learning to is the, um, like the real dangerous stuff, like butane extractions. When people's house go boom, um, so that's great for the black market, but, uh, in like the legal market, you can't just have a whole bunch of employees in a building that could go boom. Um, but we could do CO2 extraction, and there's an ethanol extraction. That's one of my head growers over there, is here to keep me straight, um, but that's kinda what we're doing, we don't, you know. They don't have any plans, uh, we definitely don't have any plans of like turning it into like a, uh, you know, a, a edibles facility. Where we're baking our own stuff, I mean, maybe down the road, but the current limitation on us is fifty thousand square feet of a commercial building. And we're gonna use that building to grow as much marijuana as possible. So if we did like a whole edibles, it would have to probably, you know, be in Templeton, so we just move that over to another facility. So what I was saying earlier, we're putting a two hundred thousand square foot building in Templeton, a hundred thousand square feet of that is just for manufacturing. That's like a real manufacturing facility, so what they're starting off with, or what we might start off with, like the bubble hash and rosin. That's just like a real cheap way to get out of doing your business, so like a real manufacturing facility is millions. So, definitely not doing that here, cause there's not enough room, in terms of our facility.
One sec with the planning board stuff, okay, and then we'll open it up to the, uh, audience, go ahead, Alice.
Just maybe you've covered this, but you don't have any plans to make, uh, consumption on site, no cafe?
No, 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 but you could change your bylaws to not allow that. But no, that'd be awesome, you could have a party where the Christmas tree stand was, everybody could just smoke. Cause that is allowed.
That's not in your plan.
No, no, I like that idea though, thanks for bringing it up, alright, everyone next year, party. Hold like ten thousand people and just go out and, no, that's, um, I'm probably staying away from that, it's dangerous, I think, you know, you get people. It's different than alcohol, you know, you can have a couple beers, drive, have a couple hits, it's, you got a couple hits, so.
Alright, okay, so, okay, I'm gonna open it up, I, I, and I saw it in the background, but first, uh, Michael, you, you guys saw you raise your hand?
Yeah, so I have a question, I know you said you don't wanna divulge too much of security plans, but. Uh, I understand certainly, uh, enclosed greenhouse is pretty secure, you're not gonna be able to get in. When you're talking about a ten thousand foot outdoor facility, what's gonna prevent every person and his friend from coming all over the place to get into that, that farm?
Um, that's a really good question, so, when I saw the outdoor, you know, marijuana idea, I was so excited. And then I found out that, that's not really how it is, you have to have a building with your outdoor operation, doesn't make sense, right? So we will have to, you know, Mary will have to build like a two thousand square foot building, or, or three thousand square foot building. Next to the outdoor facility, so the moment it's ready, it gets cut and moved into the facility, so it's a little more secure. Um, what would stop people from going there is, maybe cutting down a plant that really isn't ready, one, one thing. Um, the second is, we would have double fencing, with nice, you know, barbed wire at the top. Um, and then that's monitored twenty-four seven by cameras, on the outside of the fence and then inside the fence. Um, the cameras are very expensive, so they're monitored, and it costs, for that size, probably a hundred to two hundred bucks a day for the camera service. Um, and it's monitored, and the moment they see something, it's like night vision thermal, they can start yelling at them, it's most likely you're talking about kids. So they're gonna yell at the kids, get away, get away, so we have a, uh, what we can do is, when we kinda say what they have to do, some places, they just call the cops. But if it's kids, we'll like, just tell them to get away, and they'll figure out that there's cameras, uh, but then when you get inside. Uh but then when you get inside, if you were to happen to get inside, you're gonna set up a whole bunch of trip alarms. So and depending on how the town wants us, other towns has has us provide a live feed to the police station, which is great. So in our retail stores, like in Philston, they're gonna have a live feed. So it's easy for us to do and it's safer for us to do and we can waive it for police all day, so. So that's something, you know, it's it's safe and our insurance companies like that. Does that answer the question there?
It does. Okay.
Sir? My name is Jay Johnston, I live at seventy-two Gardner Road and I'm a little bit surrounded. So I got a lot of concerns and uh my biggest concern is why, why do we need pot? We can't even get a cell tower, why do we need pot in our town? This is a little town, nice little town, we got organic farmer right next door. You're gonna have, I mean, maintenance land sixty-nine is wet, really wet. And they're gonna redo redoing sixty-eight this year and right in front of that, my house. They're gonna have to put in drainage, the drainage goes right down to the swamp, the tar moles and uh. Why, why we need pot? What are you trying to do here?
Well, I I definitely can't answer that question for you, but I can say that um the town has only voted yes. To questions that have come up about marijuana since the questions have started coming up. So, you know, we're now in a position to, because we've we've made it um doable. By our our town meeting votes and by our ballot question votes and all that, we're now in a position uh that we have to. Um uh do everything we can to make sure that it's done properly because we didn't provide any restriction before.
Yeah, I'm gonna wanna see some plans. They're gonna have footprints on on uh the properties and lighting pollution, water pollution, septic. I mean, they're gonna have to use a septic system on maintenance house because there's nothing else parked. I mean, that's twenty-eight acres or thirty acres and of wetlands. And the stove farm, uh I don't know anything about the property behind the stove farm, but.
Oh, is that that question, so as far as um, you know, to.
The stove shop, I mean.
Yeah, no, I know what you mean, um so as far as uh, yeah, still fine, I get you. Uh yeah, that's that's a losing proposition right there. But as far as uh infrastructure, uh you know, you talked about some of that as far as the size of facilities and all that, but yeah, the the as far as operation of them, you talked about. Water a little bit, gray water you talked about a little bit, but but how about those other support uh, you know, uh support, you know, items for. You know, the workers and whatnot, how's that all work?
Yeah, so for the special permit process, like everything you mentioned, like having plot plans, detailed plans, they do have a perk test, by the way, at sixty-nine. Um and a septic plant, and a plan I think that's signed off by conservation a bunch of years ago.
Really?
But um, you know, we're also a bunch of hippies, we're not gonna go in there and start polluting the water, but um. Yeah, yeah, so all that for the special permit process, it's like the special permit process is gonna be real intense here. Like everything you just mentioned, we have to have like plans for and the board of health signs off on everything. So it's every building department, board of health, highway department probably, I don't know for sure, but every other town I go in, fire fire chief. Everyone's gonna have to sign on our plans, so the only saving grace is we don't need spring.
You're gonna have all the plans available for us.
It's public, everything, everything is public, so what we're gonna do when we file our special permit is I'm gonna file like thirty pages of awesome stuff you get to read. And everything's gonna be in there for every company, so you you'd actually see our plans, you know, when we apply for the special permit. It's all gonna be uh probably posted on the town website.
Now my question, last question.
Yeah, could, yeah, sure.
I want to direct it at the selectmen, why do we want this? Ask yourself that, why do we want this? No, no, it can't be the money, we've lived this far without the money. You gotta ask yourself, why do we want this? We want pot in our po- uh town? Then I guess that's what we elected you to decide, but.
You didn't, you know, we're 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 here as the voice of you guys, the constituency and. As I, I'm not falling back by any means on what I just said three minutes ago about what the town, how the town voted in the past, but. That's how the town voted in the past.
I know.
And we created bylaws with the specific square footage restrictions that he's adhering to, so it's a tricky one.
Yep.
So it it you can't, your question can't be answered.
Come up as a referendum vote?
Uh.
Or is it a selectmen vote?
Oh, no, it's the.
It's a town vote.
Yes, it's a town vote, it has nothing to do with us, yeah, it's nothing to do with us.
Well, we'll know if the town wants it.
Well, it's already, it's already happened.
It happened last year.
Last year, the town said yes.
To this?
So we're doing this.
The town, no, no, the town said yes to the re- the requirements to establish parameters in a bylaw for marijuana. For ten thousand square foot residential, for fifty thousand square foot and commercial industrial, I think both. Uh and all of the things that they're adhering to, they're adhering to on purpose. Because they don't wanna go against what's in the bylaw that the town already approved, because then it might get rejected. So at this point, again, we're not there yet, but at this point, they're very early on in their presentations to the town on this. But right now, they've read our bylaw that we as a town said, this is our marijuana bylaw and they said, okay, we're gonna do it that way. Um if you wanna follow up.
Yeah, so I just wanna add to that real quick, so when when the state had the ballot question a couple of years ago, remember we had a vote whether or not, on the state level? Whether or not we were gonna allow marijuana, um Hubbardson was, so then they they took that, so the state wanted as a whole. And then they took each town and said, what did what did the town, what did each town vote? And since Hubbardson voted yes, or the majority of the people in this town voted yes, we want legal marijuana. We can't, the town was not able to go back and put a restriction to say no marijuana. Because the town voted overwhelmingly in the state vote that yes, we do want marijuana. So the most that the town can do is then say, okay, we have to accept marijuana if it comes. But what kind of restrictions are we gonna put on this? And that's what Dan is just saying, that there's um. This was been approved at town meeting in two thousand and eighteen, what kind of restrictions we're gonna allow were put on marijuana growers and sellers. So that that's where, that's where we are now.
Yeah, thank you for clarification, real quick, Tom, I I had a, I had one in the back, you'll be next, okay?
Actually, partner.
Okay, well, I can come to you next, but I just thought to go, uh yes, sir?
Yeah, John Belkafidi, one thirty-one Gardner Road.
Hi.
Been in the town for fifteen years and is there any data, uh you know, historical information as it relates to. How these type of businesses that come into the towns affect the uh, you know, the value of property with a up, down, stagnant, what have you? And is there anything, any information about that?
Yeah, I mean, there's articles that say both sides of it, so it's whatever you Google and find first. Um really, there's articles that will say it doesn't do anything, there's articles that say, you know, in Colorado, next to the superstores, you know, like superstores, they're super grow sites. So in Colorado, it's like no limit, so you can grow millions of square feet and they're saying houses right next to that, you know, that are out in the open, because they're not. It's not greenhouse, it's just open, I think they've, you know, that's hurting them a little bit. Um but you know, what we're planning on doing is in a commercial zone, putting a greenhouse where greenhouse is, and then we're kinda gonna fix that property. Um and then, you know, at Six Nine Gardner, we're gonna bury that in the woods, like no one's ever gonna see that. Um you know, I would look at it like, you know, the pizza shop, I mean, did everyone's values go down when they started throwing alcohol up, you know, in there? I mean, same thing, alcohol, you know, a little different.
Yeah, I think I think the territory is changing though, you know, we're, you know, obviously moving into a marijuana thing, we've. Obviously probably had to adopt to liquor forty, fifty years ago and so it's a new paradigm, I think it just opens up a different set of expectations and.
Yeah, I mean, I I think what's going on, I mean, you know, at fifty-six, like. I'm talking to one of the neighbors over there and, you know, I can't say anything with their property, you know. Um you know, thirty-two or twenty-six Worcester, I mean, we're limited to such a small operation. That in reality won't probably be around in a couple of years, uh the outdoor part, um you know. Sure, Mary at some point would move to an all indoor greenhouse operation. So in Massachusetts, you're restricted to like how many square feet you can have as a company. So you would want all that square feet indoor or in greenhouse, you wouldn't wanna waste it on outdoor, which is why I'm just doing it for one year, just to see what happens. Um yeah, I don't really have a firm answer, I mean, I literally read articles that say either way. And usually I go to these meetings and someone has the article that says all it hurts and I say, well, there's articles that say the other way.
A lot of those, a lot of those articles too are based on Colorado, which was extremely unregulated, so there's more pot shops in Colorado than there are coffee shops now. So that's never gonna happen in Massachusetts, I mean, it's like just, you know, the the cannabis commission uh was looking at California and Colorado. A lot of the lawyers that wrote the law here came from there, so they. There there's so so much regulation, they have such a tight hold on this whole thing, there's never gonna be. More pot shops in Massachusetts or even close, I mean, people, I mean, there's there's already touched caps. Like counties for, you know, capings, or I mean, they're they're that's, we're way far down an unregulated road from. Being able to look at an article from Colorado or from or from California where there's more. Unregistered dispensaries in Oakland and San Francisco than there are registered dispensaries, I mean, I don't know what's going on with that, but. That's a lot of those like articles that you read, because we read them, people are sending us, sending them to us all the time, just in terms of like. You know, getting into this space and trying to get into this industry and it's hard to like look at those too. Just because they're, I mean, you know, they're literally everywhere in Colorado when you get off the plane, they're, you know, they're around every corner. So I can see, you know, that that would be uh that would be not attractive in in some sense, but this. It's just a little bit different, sorry.
No problem, that was good. Uh one sec, Tom, do you wanna chime in?
Yeah, Mike was just partly right, the town did vote for the marijuana bylaw. The town could have uh prevented marijuana from coming into town if they had it as a annual, a meeting, an annual town meeting. And if they went to the ballot, whereas the ballot was so skewed to wanting it in the state, in Hubbardson, you know, planning board was doing that. Uh they felt it probably wasn't gonna pass. We didn't have any bylaw at all before that and the state requires that you allow it, if there's no bylaw, you would allow it just about anywhere, so. Uh we, at the time, the planning board said we should at least get something in place to do it and that's why it was there. But it was voted overwhelmingly at the town.
Yep, no, it was, first one?
Can you explain uh the three properties in question, sixty-nine Gardner Road, twenty-six Worcester Road and fifty-six Gardner Road? Will you be the entity that owns those pieces of properties or what is your relationship to those properties as an entity?
Yeah, so our company doesn't own those.
You will not either?
Um, so the twenty-six Worcester Road is gonna get cut up, there's gonna be, there's a house that's getting cut out of that property at some point. Um and then we'll have like twenty-eight acres left, so I'll probably end up owning that one, maybe I'll put a cell tower. If you want a cell tower, I'll put one in, believe me. There's a lot of money in cell towers, put that right next to the solar, um so yeah, I think we're gonna, we're gonna throw solar on that twenty-six Worcester. Um so I would own that property and then we'll see how sixty-nine and fifty-six shake out. So I mean, if he's, you know, putting massive amount of money on the greenhouses, I'd expect it, some point he would own that property.
But just to be clear, I mean, at this point in time, the other two properties in question are gonna be leased or rented or some.
Yeah, in the beginning, they'll be leased until we get money to buy them, so we don't.
So you will not have an interest in the physical property, except for the fact of building, maintaining and renting as a leaser?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, eventually, I I will be able to buy the properties when I have the money, but in the beginning, you know, everyone has to borrow from somebody. So in the beginning, they're owned by somebody else and we're just leasing, but eventually I can buy them if I want to.
Yeah, sure.
Uh we actually have a couple more before, so pink shirt in the back, is she still there?
Yeah, pink shirt.
And then Laura, you're next? Okay.
It's really hot in here, sorry, I just had some questions about um. Like who's regulating your ultimate product and like will the health board be involved? Who's responsible for what is sold, the quality? And um I mean, obviously, that's from my uh my career side, as reproductive toxicologist, but as a mom. I have other questions that I'm very concerned about, like that location is exactly where the bus stop is for high schoolers, I picked my kid up there.
Yeah.
Um, you know, he doesn't necessarily look like he's underage, but you know, he's here, he'll let him see. He could easily pass for over twenty-one, I'm fifteen.
Fake ID or something?
Fifteen on sixty-eight.
Yep.
Uh I'm concerned about that as well and that also, I've seen a number of people, now that everything's gone through. Coming from well out of state to crazy locations, like picking up my children from school again. Uh Fitchburg, um there's a gas station right across from Great Wolf Lodge, seeing a lot of people coming from munchies. You know, without a state, in their car being completely smelling of marijuana. So maybe we need to have that relook where, you know, the town is able to, you know, as we learn more and more information. You know, like from the vaping, you know, a couple of years ago, nobody thought there was gonna be a problem with vaping. So now, as we're learning what is happening in this society, what you're gonna do for quality, control. I am concerned about your laissez-faire approach and also that you say you're a hippie. The the environmental impact would be greater than you're really considering, um so I really hope those are really, those questions are thought through and. The board of health is really involved in this and taking care of our citizens, taking care of our children and taking care of our land that we love here very much. So I think there's a lot of people that is are not happy with this at all. I hope the boards, both boards will really think this through and consider the real health impacts. That could be involved, especially if there's someone we are not completely sure of, and he really is saying he's here for a year. That doesn't sound like very long term to me and then just letting people come in who we don't know and whatever controls there are really need to be thought through. So I question what those could be too.
You wanna comment on that?
I, there was a lot of questions there, uh so yeah, CCC, uh state of Massachusetts, they're pretty smart people, uh so um.
But are you a smart person and concerned?
Yeah, so.
Right, let him, let him, let him.
Yeah, so the CCC, they have testing requirements and we're gonna follow them. Uh so I've got some of the best growers in the state who've been working for the CCC for five years and growing their product. Testing their product and selling their product to retail stores, uh they started in medical. Um so I have full confidence that they're gonna run our greenhouse according to the CCC. Um we won't sell marijuana to your son. Uh to buy marijuana from us is usually a three ID verification process. Um so you'd have to have a really good fake ID uh to get by our scanners for our IDs and then the uh three process, the three people they gotta show their ID to. Um just in terms of the quality, um the state regulates that, so that's not us.
So there's a microbial test, there's obviously yeast and insect tests.
Do you wanna come up here and just explain the uh?
Is the county health involved, the board of health involved at all?
No, so we uh, it's it's the state of Massachusetts handles this, so we're like regulated by the state of Massachusetts. And we do, you know, they don't expect the towns to get involved, but do you wanna just give a quick brief how you guys take your marijuana and test it?
So my name's Ron Baldwin, I'm one of the growers there, um it's a, the CCC requires you to pass a yeast and mold testing, a microbial testing. Also a THC quality testing, um can uh the cannabin- cannabinoids in the uh product. Also the terpene pro- uh profiles of the uh product that being put out. Um when you transfer from, if you make uh, how Damon was explaining the bubble hash to rosin. That all has to be re- uh tested as well prior to even being packaged, if it does not meet requirements. Um it has two chances to pass your, the state requirement for any of those. Uh I think there's five requirements for yeast molds, uh yeast mold mildews. Uh microbial, all of that has, if it does not pass after the second time, the product has to be destroyed. So it's a very regulated thing, it's done, all the testing is has to be done by a third party as well. So we have to send out samples um of our product to uh for each. You have to have a sample for each different strain, each different product, whether it's the bubble hash, the rosin.
How often is that required?
What?
How often is that sample required?
Before it's set out, before it's even packaged, it has to pass.
How many pounds?
Uh every, every, I think it's five pounds has to be, has to have a um. Four gram testing from that five pound has to be sent through and then tested. And then if that pa- that fails, you have to take a new sample from that batch as well. It's not just like, oh, that sample failed, we have to, we'll just wait a couple of weeks and resend it again.
And how often are you, like, they come to check on you?
What do you mean?
Well, they must, yeah, inspection, how often?
That's regulated by the CCC, it's a minimum, minimum of, they have one. That's regulated by the CCC, it's a minimum, minimum of, they have one announced visit a month, and then they can do two unannounced visits to the facility at any time each month.
And are you giving any for medical use, like CBD, or is it just THC?
Uh, that is, are we?
No, it's just THC.
Yeah, well, each, each plant has its own breakdown of CBD and THC qualities, like, different strains.
So this is really only for getting high, basically, is that right?
No, not at all.
It's recreational marijuana.
Yeah, it's recreational marijuana.
So it's not like, it's medicinal.
Recreational medicinal is just a stamp, the, the product.
Well, it depends on what you need, like, I would never want to stop anyone from getting it if they need it for medicine. My father had severe epilepsy, so I see that is, it can be useful, but generally.
The, there is no difference in the way that recreational or medical is processed.
Well, there is.
No, there is not.
Well, okay, so there's a lower amount of THC, what kind of percentage THC are you gonna be having in these plants?
Or whether it's.
This is rosin, so the rosin will have how much, sorry?
It's only, yeah, that's, depending on what it comes out, so it does.
I'd like to give ninety-five percent of like that.
So I feel like we need to understand this as a town, what we're really getting into, that it is more dangerous than just this is great for people who need it medically. So I, I really wanna hope, I really hope that you will all really research, um, all of this, like, not just this group coming in, but what they're proposing that could be very dangerous.
And if I could just ask you, and, and again, I, that's, I'm sort of letting this go, because this is, you're sort of being our voice right now, but honestly, no, this is great. What I'd like, you keep sort of coming back to us, right, saying, hey, you guys need to research, what do you expect us to do? I'm just asking, I'm, and I, I know, maybe you don't know, but I'm just asking, based on what we've already talked about a couple times with how the town has approved this for coming through, I'm just asking, what do you, what do you, 'cause I wanna do it, but I'm saying, what do you expect us to do?
Well, I guess making sure that the inspection process is really, I mean, first of all, I'm against it, I guess, I mean, yes, for sure. Because as a mom, I would not want this in my hometown, um, so close to where I live, where my, we'd go for pizza, I mean, that's our pizza place, where, you know, Tom, you know, it's right there with his organic farm, and I'm concerned that putting, like, even the soil, are you testing what kind of soil?
The, the, the soil has to be tested prior to any proper cultivation, just to make sure that there is even the right amendments in the soil for the plants.
I just think we need to really make sure we all understand what we're getting into, and the level, if he's really trying to get ninety-five percent THC, and it's really, I mean, that is not useful medicinally, so as long as we all understand this is not just, this is more about recreational use and getting stoned. The people, we'll be bringing in people into the town for however long it lasts, I mean, he's saying a year for him, and then it's gonna go to Canada. I mean, is, is that really true, I mean, what's happening?
It's really not what I said.
I'm sorry?
It's not what I said.
We can watch with the tape, if, if you said that you're going to be, you're gonna be taken, overtaken by Canada, no?
It was part, I mean, alright, well.
If you want to, I'm fine, I mean, I'm happy to bring this up later.
No, 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 it's fine, I, I actually still wanna go back to the same question, it's, I'm not throwing this back at you by any means or putting you on the spot, but what, you know, so you kinda answered what I had asked you, which was, what do you want us to do? And it sounds like, I'm just gonna paraphrase, but it sounds like, um, uh, and, and I'm gonna paraphrase and I'm gonna sort of answer at the same time, it sounds like, and I agree, that we need to be doing as much research as we can into what the safest way to go about this is, to then be able to express those concerns towards the special permit discussion. Because none of this really affects what we're doing tonight, it just doesn't, just based on what our bylaws are and all that sort of thing. So what our next step is gonna be, is gonna be the important one, which is all the questions we may have, or restrictions that we can put, or recommendations we can have, all that, for the, the sort of coup de grace, which is the special permit with the conditions on it, so, I think that that's how I would answer your question, um, is, that's the best we can answer it right now, which is, think about all these things that you're saying, plus all the ones that you haven't talked about, because I know you're just going off the cuff mostly right now, and then be able to, to be intelligent about what we do for our, our sort of final step on this.
This is also gonna be the most regulated space to do business, probably sh- somewhere in the area of biotech. I mean, this is gonna be extremely.
Well, there is a retail store, so I think we.
A retail store, but there, there's, this is two, there's two hundred nine pages to the CMR, nine thirty-five, CMR five hundred. If you, I mean, just to start, you could, like, print them out and just start looking at them, I mean, they're really, they're, they're made just to understand, they're pretty easy. So it actually goes step by step, breaks out all the different processes, all the different types of licenses, exactly what's required under each sort of umbrella area that you're moving into, if you're gonna be a cultivator, if you're gonna be a product manufacturer. The state encourages you to become vertically integrated, so you can control what's going on. There is no, you can't, like, once these places are here, there's no, you can't come onto these sites, you need a badge from the state, you need a background check, you need a, you know, and there's no, it's, it's extremely, extremely regulated, and the environmental impact, there's a whole section in here, I mean, there's the, the water usage, all, like, you know, any runoff, blah, 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 they, they hit us really hard, so if there's any question, it's just storage tanks.
Okay, so that's the manufacturing.
And you're paying, and you pay, yeah, and you're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars if they don't like what's happening here, if there's, oh my gosh, there's environmental impact, but, you know, this permit is possible, then it's like, the, the, the cost is gonna fall to us, it's not gonna fall to you guys, this is such a new space.
Yeah, I'm not worried about costs.
Okay, you know what, I'm actually gonna, we've had.
No, I think all costs.
Well, as long, can you question the police, please, just you sent, ask the police what they think about how you can find out if someone is really able to drive, and how difficult it is, so as long as they're obviously involved, that would be obviously a very important thing.
Okay, so I've got a few other people written down here, I'm gonna move on now, um, thank you.
Thank you.
So Laura, you were next.
Yes, um, I'm Laura Foley, well, I think that these similar kinds of discussions were going around when someplace like the Stone Cow Brewery was being built, that we're gonna be manufacturing alcoholic beverages in a, in an agricultural, agricultural commercially zoned place, what effect is this going to have in our town? Are we going to have people becoming intoxicated and then going onto the road, are they going to serve children, are kids going to go pick the hops? And I think that these are the kinds of questions that get worked out with discussion at the town. The fact is that the Cannabis Control Commission is an entity that marijuana consumption is legal in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The question for us going forward is, how do we want that to look in our town? Do we want to be afraid of it, or do we want to embrace it? I think that's more of a conversation for the special permitting meeting. What I wanted to ask you specifically was, you were mentioning how the agricultural component at, um, on Worcester Road, the, the outdoor grow, was going to be an experiment for you, and if it tanked, then it was going to go away.
But that's, uh, that was at fifty-six Gardner.
Oh, I thought, well, wherever it was, the open grow, where you're gonna be a farmer and.
Well, it's going around a lot after one year to make room for his greenhouses.
Okay, so if that tanks, or whether or not it's successful, that's just going to be, that's incorporated as part of your business plan? It doesn't all hang on the success or failure of an outdoor grow, right?
No, I mean, we're in Royal Stan in Templeton, so.
Yeah, 'cause you're.
I was, I was just trying the outdoor grow because I really wanna see if it works.
'Cause you know that we got a real short growing season here.
Yeah, so we're gonna use what's called automatics, so usually the growing seasons, you know, May to October by the sun. These automatics, even if you put them under twenty-four hours of light, they pretend like it's only twelve hours of light, like other plants, and they flower no matter what. So it's generally seventy-five days is the long ones, you can do fifty-five days, but the better ones are like seventy-five days from seed to done. And then the moment they look done, they gotta be cut and brought into the inside to finish, that's where they. So, yeah, so it's, the outdoor doesn't, they could completely fail, it doesn't, it's not gonna affect us financially.
Also, in terms of, um, you know, either failing or succeeding for a grow, right now in Massachusetts, um, there's such a shortage of legal cannabis for, for the stores, if you talk to anybody who goes to a lot of these stores, they wait in line for a long time, they're looking at an app menu of what's there, after they wait for forty minutes, this is in the city, this is on Brook, in Brookline, in Neta. They get in there, and in the forty minutes, they've run out of three or four things, because there's an extreme shortage of legal cannabis in the, in the state. Um, that being said, there is no real failed grow right now, because the big companies, like, if you're coming as a, as a cultivator, say, he, when he says experiment, what he means is, it's not really experiment, there's no experimentation, they've been growing cannabis in the state for a long time. Theory is growing outdoor, grew this past summer, and was successful. There's no real fa- failure, because if, say, you get, okay, a very wet season, and you have a powdery mildew problem, or you have just any number of problems that would make, cause the batch to fail a microbial test, the lar- some of the larger companies that are still making topicals, they still take those products and pay a lot of money for the whole plant. It's not just, it's not make or break, so there's no, which is, and, and it's interesting, you can't grow corn and then sell moldy corn. You can actually grow cannabis and sell moldy cannabis to a big company that isn't gonna turn it into an extract that you ingest, but will soak it in solvent and turn it into a topical for your skin, and you can still get north right now of two thousand dollars a pound. So, there's no, I just, like, it's not, I know it sounds like a gamble, but like, you know, you go to these cannabis meetings of like entrepreneurs and people who are in this space, and it's people from other places, or like talking about all this stuff, there's no real, right now, the demand is so high in the state, is that it's really, even if it rained every day, and it was a totally, would be a lost batch of like, you know, a, 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 a crop that you would eat, this is not necessarily so, because, you know, the, the compounds are in the plant, they'll harvest the whole plant, soak it, and then still extract it and use it, you know, I mean, just look at, look at all the, all the products that are out there that are not ingestible now that are, and, you know, and also, I am doing CBD strains, I'm doing high CBD strains, my wife does not like high THC, she likes the very low THC, high CBD strains, and, um, I'm actually doing a, like, a fair amount of that, so.
Oh, I do have one follow-on question, if I may, the, you're talking about, uh, not recycling, re- using the entire plant. So at the end of the growing, the plant's, uh, useful growing life, and you've got the plant that's been harvested, what happens to that plant once the, uh, the buds have been harvested?
Ron, wanna take that one? They just asked what we do.
Specifically, I'm asking, is there an ecumenic place to get rid of the old stuff rather than just dumping it to pile like a farmer?
Everything, all leaf matter, stem matter, all has to be rendered unusable by the CCC, so what that means is, you have to take that product, um, the stems and the leaves, run it through a shredder, and then also dump dirt in with it and mix it all in, so that nobody can dig through your dumpster and pull out useful weed that they can smoke or anything like that. Um, but it's all shredded, and then, uh, like I said, mixed with dirt, and then thrown away and shipped off to a disposal facility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, and, uh, everyone who's raised their hand, I definitely have you on my list, and, and I am not playing favorites, but if you still like to go in the back there, the gap, purple?
Yes, my name is Colleen Higgins, and I live at nine Goddner Road, um, I have two questions, um, I'm kinda confused. You, you're renting or you're leasing, and no, but none of you own, any of these, none of you have bought these properties that you're gonna be growing on or retailing from?
Well, it's like anywhere else, like, when someone goes and buys a house, like, did you pay cash for your house, or did you get a loan? That's what we're doing, we're getting a loan.
Okay, no, no, but I mean, so you're gonna actually buy these properties?
Yeah, so right now, we don't have cash, banks don't lend to marijuana companies, so you gotta find someone to buy the place for you, which I did. So we've got people that will buy the places for us, they've got the agreements to buy them, and then eventually, you know, we can buy them back.
Okay, and, and I have another question, please, um, you say you've got all these people that are gonna be working there, are you gonna hire, like, locally here?
Yeah.
Or do you have people that come in that are specialized?
No, so, um, you know, living in Royal Stan, we get a little more snow than anywhere else, but, you know, think of two feet of snow. Marijuana still needs to be taken care of, so we wanna h- hire locally, so when it's two feet of snow, everyone still has to come to work, like, there's no snow days. So we don't wanna hire people from hour away, so we're gonna hire as much locally as we can.
Okay, so the money, so people in town could possibly get jobs?
Yeah, so we have a lot of en- I mean, yeah, we have like entry jobs.
As long as anybody can pass a normal background check, they're coming along.
No underage?
No underage kids, you gotta be over age.
You gotta be over age, we have twenty-one, not even eighteen, it's twenty-one, it's regulations.
Yeah, you gotta twenty, yeah, so, well, you know, we have entry level jobs, like, most of the jobs, you become entry level till you figure out what you're doing, and then, you know, people can move in management, so, you know, we're gonna start at ten thousand square feet in both greenhouses and then build, you know, build up from there, so.
And I have one question for the select board.
Sure.
Um, okay, so we passed this bylaw, and we've got people now coming in that's going to, they're gonna put greenhouses. Is there a limit to how many of these can happen? Like, can another three people come in here in six months and say, okay, we wanna, and they do, they wanna do the same thing with other properties in town? Are there limits, is there a limit to this?
Uh, well, I'm gonna have Brian, he just, uh, he's gonna answer it.
So the, um, each grower is restricted to how much, or each company is restricted to how much they can grow?
Mm-hmm.
In terms of the bylaw, the bylaw allows what it allows, just like any other business, except for retail, which is limited by the number of liquor licenses you have.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we could have, we, we're gonna have one retail store out of all of this, how many more could we possibly have?
Percentage.
Correct. How many retails?
Yeah.
I believe it's just one.
Just one, okay.
If, if I may, just to clarify, it is typically based on a percentage on liquor licenses, so there's, there's a, there's a ratio.
So if you added liquor.
Which, which I don't know exactly what it is, but there is a ratio between the liquor licenses and marijuana establishments that you can have in a given town.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Laura, you wanna chime in?
That's actually not true, the, the, the town had the opportunity, we wrote the bylaw, to limit the number of facilities they have in the town. That wasn't part of the bylaw, so right now, any facility, you could have as many facilities as you want in the town, as long as they're in a commercial district.
Correct, but that, that, that is certainly something that can be added in by law, it's what it's like, it's that you can restrict it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Currently, bylaws are not established as such, there's certainly a proposal that can be put as part of the town meeting come in two thousand and twenty. And that is a restriction that can be imposed currently, to Tom's point, there is not such a thing, but there is a ratio that can be established at a town level.
Okay, I'll just champion, so, but the, the ratio is generally twenty percent of the liquor stores?
Correct.
With a minimum of one, so if the town wants to only limit it to one, we'd be, uh, uh, thank you very much.
Yeah, right.
Um, thanks for the.
So somebody else who comes in first.
Yeah, so unless someone else comes in, literally, someone can come in and just say they're gonna open up a store, then we have a war, we win, but, um.
And just touching back on the, um, the, the, the woman who was concerned about the product testing, right now, there's three product testing labs in the state. There's a several-month backup sometimes, depending on how many cultivators are harvesting, so on and so forth, what time of the season. If anybody wants to get into this space, that is the place to get into it, because it's basically just an ancillary business, but also, you can't hold other licenses, so a lot of people who are interested in getting into this, they're not doing, they're not getting into the testing lab, you know, they might have what you would need to do that, and to be honest with you, the, the upstart for a testing lab is actually much lower than most of the other business models. It's a few pricey machines, um, it's, it's really just, like, something, someone should start one here, because it's, it, the test, they're five hundred dollars a test. They're all day long, and these, these three labs are making all the money, like, we have to ship them, you know, we have to ship it all around, so, it's just, just an aside.
That's coming up next meeting, by the way.
Alright, I'm gonna still move along, I've got four, four more names currently on it, Mike, Mike Rojessi, you were next.
Yeah, um, do you have any plans to mitigate the odor that is, that comes from growing marijuana?
Yeah, so the greenhouses are, uh, completely enclosed, so there's no odor.
What about the extract fans?
Uh, so it's completely enclosed, so we don't have, well, there are, like, say there are fans going outside, um.
There's a company called Cannabuster.
Well, that's, that's.
And that, what it is, is those fan, when the fans are on, there's an iodine spray that's in, uh, sprayed into, um, the middle of the fan, basically, which kills any odor molecules before it leaves the building.
Yeah, that's if they did a, I think they're gonna do the fully enclosed.
You're talking about hoop houses?
No, no, the, well, the, I, I was going for the fully enclosed greenhouses they're doing.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, well, I'm saying if they're fifty thousand square feet, they're not using fans, I'm saying they're fully enclosed with the HVAC, like we're doing in town. Um, for the outdoor grow, I mean, that's decided in the two thousand and eighteen bylaw, you know, outdoor marijuana. So, I don't think anyone has come up with anything to do anything about marijuana, growing outdoors for the odor, and it'd be basically impossible. So that, I think that was settled, I guess, two thousand and eighteen, but yeah, so I mean, I don't know if anybody in the world would be able to control the odor from something growing outdoors.
Mike, you were next?
Yeah, so, um.
Yeah, so, um, I, I, I see two things going on here. One is the introduction of a growing, a series of growing facilities. Highly regulated, uh, from everything I've heard so far, very, very regulated as far as what goes into the facility, what comes out of the facility, testing, the whole bit. I'm, it's, it's a, it's another farmable product, right? It, you growing pot in a, in a, um, uh, in a greenhouse probably is not going to affect me on a day to day basis. The other part is the store. And what I'm concerned about is the same as what the, the woman wearing the pink outfit is. Is the people coming in from out of town, let's just call them Cheech and Chong, uh, coming in, completely smoke filled car, going in, buying all their edibles, buying all their pot, getting completely stoned in the parking lot, and then driving down sixty eight and killing somebody. That sort of thing. Yes, there's a number of hours on the books and so forth, but short of a cop sitting outside of the store during working hours, there's really not much of a guarantee that, that people from out of state who might be undesirable coming into the town, who may take a off road and go, oh, look, there's a nice ATV out in the front yard. There's a nice set of snowmobiles out in the front yard, maybe I'll go home with pot and a snow appeal. That sort of thing bothers me, and I, I'm kinda curious what you're, I don't expect you to necessarily solve it yet, because it, that's really a town thing, but I think it's a concern that probably should be discussed.
All right, so in terms of, uh, you know, by the time the retail stores open, um, that's sometime next year, maybe, um, you know, there's gonna be, right now, there's two hundred and something retail stores ahead of us in line for licensing. So, by the time we open, you're gonna have one in Berry, there's gonna be one right up the street at the ninety nine, there's one at exit twenty three. I'll be open at exit twenty one, I'll be also open at exit eighteen. Um, so anybody coming from out of state to come into Harborsden to buy marijuana when we're open is like really crazy, because they just passed two hundred stores on the way to Harborsden. So, it's definitely not gonna be like, uh, like Leister or whatever that is.
Leicester.
Leicester, um, so it's not gonna be like that, you know. In terms of somebody taking an edible, it takes about a half an hour to kick in, so hopefully they're on the highway by then. Just kidding, um, no, but they should be out of town by then, but, uh, so in terms of like someone sitting in our parking lot and smoking, they're gonna get arrested. So, we have security on site. One of the big things the CCC has us doing is checking people in their cars. Specifically, if you come into our store with someone under twenty one, you get kicked out, like that's sitting in the car. You know, you're getting kicked out and we get you off our site. So, you can't just like come to their store and leave your kids in our, we're gonna think you're buying it for the kids.
Right.
Plus their, you know, um, so if you're in our parking lot smoking, you're pretty stupid. You're like past the signs that we say, don't smoke.
You do know what pot does to you.
Yeah, 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 I should've chose my beer better, so that's why they call it dope. Um, so, yeah, I mean, in terms of like our, we have like real security, we can get in a lot of trouble from the CCC if we let people like consume on site, so it's part of our licensing that, part of our, like, when we turn in our security detail, you know, we talk about people in our parking lot, how we go out and have to ask them to leave. Um, you know, if they're in our store and we notice that they left someone in their car, um.
Are these renter cops or trained security professionals?
Um, like in some towns, you know, we're using their ex cops, you know, they're retired. Um, I don't know, Ron, like in the retail store that we're having in the city, I mean, it's just regular, and it's not like we're hiring.
They, they are trained, though, like, to, to be a security officer, you have to be trained by you have the head of security who has to know the bill, the security plan codes, go over everything with the chief of police and all the regulations for the CCC and everything, it's not like, it's, we're gonna just hire a car off the street and be like, all right, yeah, go, go walk the parking lot.
Right.
He has to go through a training before he's ac- actually able to be alone and walk the street.
All right, so to that point, uh, I've got a couple in the back, I'm gonna go in a second, but I just.
Over in the corner, she's trying to handle it.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you back there.
We're in the corner, yes.
All right, not quite yet, though, so I'm, I'm, to, to Mike's point, and, and just, here's an example of an email that I've received. Uh, this is from a, a High Street resident, uh, Josh Lerner, actually, and I'm gonna paraphrase it, but basically, it talks about High Street and how it's sometimes used, uh, to bypass sort of Main Street, but overall, um, as of now, there's no, and, and again, I'm, I'm not right, reading it all, but enough of it to sort of get, uh, to, to sort of further what Mike's talking about here as far as that, that type of facility. As of now, there's no immediate blood or breathalyzer test to confirm acute marijuana intoxication or impairment, with increased traffic in the area used by individuals purchasing psychoactive substances and a clear relationship between marijuana usage and car accidents, public road safety is also secur- serious concern. Increased crime in adjacent areas has also been linked to new marijuana dispensaries, EMS utilization is likely to increase, and on and on. So, this, with, with, you know, different sources cited, so these are, 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 you know, your fellow residents, um, feeling the same, sort of same concerns and, and we're just gonna have to, yeah, as it's been discussed a few times, gonna have to do everything we can to, to make sure it's, it's, um, you know, every eye is dotted, um, you know, it really is, so, um, I will come to you in a second, I didn't know, but there was a couple in the back, so, uh, yes, ma'am?
Yes, I'll just ask one question, I'm, uh, my name's Debbie Stetson, I'm at twenty eight Worcester Road, so I'm next to twenty six. And I wanted to ask how this is all gonna work in with the permit that they have for clay pit remediation on the property? Twenty six Worcester Road currently has a permit.
Yeah, so we're waiting until all that's like clear.
So, you're waiting until that's done?
We're probably waiting until twenty twenty one for that site.
Okay.
Um, so if you look at what their schedule is, how could we plant in June on that site if they're clearing this?
My question.
Yeah, so no, that's a big, long, uh, deal, so you're like twenty twenty one over there.
Twenty twenty one and yet.
Planting May twenty twenty one.
Okay, but you haven't really reached out to the owners?
Oh, we're in agreement with them.
You are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Sarah, you're next too, and then you.
Mark Phillips, Old Princeton Road. Uh, my question is more for the board. Where do, where does the town stand on giving permits to a company that grows something that's federally not legal?
So, we, just to sort of, this is to the board, we're gonna, we're, we're a family here, okay?
No, we're not.
And I'm saying that, planning board and, and select board, we don't give permits for any of that. Uh, it doesn't sort of come through the, the guise of what we've got, we, we facilitate meetings such as this, um, that as the process goes along, um, you know, it, it, there's certain boxes that have to get checked, such as outreach meetings like this, and then ones in the future. But there are other avenues, such as through the planning board and the zoning bo- board of affairs, that just have to hear the plans of those who come to them, such as, has already been done uh, at a sort of minor capacity so far, initial capacity, and then sort of going on, I know it's not the greatest answer ever, but that's the answer.
I think we all need to think about that going forward.
Think about what?
The fact that it's not a federally legal product.
Okay.
And until it becomes one, we, uh, we have been hoping to advance something that's not even legal. And my daughter actually wants to mention something.
Okay, go ahead, huh?
How will this improve my life as a teenager in Harborsden? Just how will this improve my life?
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously an impossible question for me to answer, you know, and I, I appreciate you, I appreciate you coming tonight. Henry, I appreciate you coming tonight.
I mean, obvious, obvious, obvious answer here is tax dollars.
Right, that's the one I didn't wanna give, because that's, that's.
It's, no, nobody wants to say it, but that's the obvious thing, that's, 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 you know, major benefit, no matter what, you know, this money that you guys can use for the town, and your discretion.
Kinda why I moved over here.
If, if I may, I mean, as part of the, part of the planning board, what we, we are looking at here are what the state regulations are. There are federal regulations, but for intents and purposes, state laws have been enacted here in the state of Massachusetts, and we have to basically abide by what the state laws are, and that's basically the way that we are currently entertaining the bylaws that were enacted also by the residents of the state of Mass- of, 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 of the town. And so, as a result of this here, we as entities that look at these bylaws, we need to know whether or not an entity such as the one that is coming in is abiding by these bylaws. So, I, I understand, there's, there's, right now, there's a crossroads, there's a federal, uh, uh, concept as to legality or illegality of this, this drug. If you go back to the times of prohibition, alcohol was prohibited, and it's no longer prohibited. Uh, so things do change even at the federal level. So, it's, it's a, it's a moral issue, but at the same time, there's a legal issue. And at this point in time, there's a legal issue when it comes to the crossroads between state law versus federal law. And we're not the only state where this has been, uh, the case, it's, it's a case in Oregon, it's a case in Colorado, it's a case in, 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 in California. And even, other states are starting to entertain this here, so we're not the first state, uh, to, to be confronted with this here. And I understand the moral dilemma, especially for a youngster. Uh, the same thing can be said about alcohol, I mean, as a parent, I have children, I have grandchildren, and I am looking at it from the perspective of how I, as a parent, have to engender good behavior and, and make sure that that, 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 that's, that that's, uh, translated to my children. There's a tax advantage, and that's certainly something that the town is certainly, uh, potentially benefiting, and the tax benefit that come out of this here can sometimes offset the deficits that towns have, as long as it's properly regulated. And that's, that's the part that as a town, and it's not just a select board, and it's not just a planning board, but we as a town have to decide. And, uh, when the, when the town meeting came about and we've decided to bring the bylaws into place that we currently have at this point in time, the question was really asked to the town in general, and the town voted, uh, for, uh, for, for the way that the, the bylaws are currently established. So, we, we have the power to modify those and change those. As Tom mentioned earlier, there are restrictions that you couldn't put, say, for example, in terms of the total number of establishments that you have, but there's parameters, we cannot go outside of the parameters, and those parameters come to us by the state, otherwise we'd be violating state laws. And I'm not fully answering your question, but you've gotta understand that we as an entity, meaning the select board and the planning board, have, have, have places that we can work with, and within those boundaries, we can, we can, we can work and try to get the best out of this as possible. Okay? So, I, I hope you understand that this is, that it's not something that we regulate, it's actually imposed on us.
I understand, I just, my question is where does the federal law come into play?
It does not in this particular case, and it's, it's the same thing for every single town that we have here in Massachusetts, be it Cambridge, it's probably one of the worst level cities, and I lived in there, all the way up to the Berkshires, uh, we, we all are confronted with this situation.
Okay, um, yes.
I'm going back to the stinky pot smell, uh, 'cause you have the outdoor, you're gonna do the outdoor grow, kinda like right on the corner of my street. How bad is that smell?
What street is that?
The lovely High Street, you'll be familiar with us by the end of this.
That's all right, um, nice name, um.
But I do, I mean, like, like Tom Coyle of, he brought in a pig farm. I found out about the agricultural rules for the pig farm, there's a commission I can go to if he did a bad farming and it smelled really bad, 'cause the pigs wouldn't be behind my house. You didn't know that. Um, he did, he was a really good farmer, the pigs didn't smell, their bacon was delicious. But I did, there was something I could do if he was a bad farmer and his pigs stunk out of that. What, what do you guys know about outdoor growing and how bad the smell actually is?
Um. How do I answer that? Well, you know, Tom, from their, like, property, obviously, they're not gonna smell anything. So, to smell the marijuana from our property, you know, you're basically gonna have to come on the property.
Were you talking about what, ten thousand square feet of marijuana?
Yeah, you know, that's on thirty, that's, that's on thirty two acres.
Okay.
Um, and you know, we're also growing hemp on that property, which I didn't mention, I might as well.
Don't talk about the stove property, that's not thirty two acres.
Oh, no, that one, um, all right, I thought you were talking about the ten thousand.
Is that?
Uh, so, yeah, we're gonna do that, would be, you know, a one time shot, so if it does smell, it's gonna smell for like two weeks, um.
Which is fine if you're not the one in the summertime trying to go outside and all you can smell is scuffs.
Well, you have to come on our property, or just be like walking in our property back and forth in front of our property.
Okay, so as long as you know that, like, that it doesn't, I mean, like, we, if you know someone on Williamsville was, was growing pot, you could smell it since you drove by our house. I mean, it was legal, I'm sure, 'cause you can have your own pot. You were just driving by their house.
Yeah.
When you have a sizable crop, you're gonna have to magnify that, I would imagine.
Yeah, I mean, it's the, the bylaws in the town allow for outdoor marijuana, and everything that comes with it.
So, that followed to the agricultural commission for like farming mitigation if there was odors and all that stuff? I knew what it happens with animals, you could go to them and complain.
And I, I guess what we're going at is, I, I mentioned we're growing hemp, um, so, what are you smelling, are you smelling my hemp or are you smelling the marijuana? Because I'm gonna have way more hemp growing than I have marijuana.
Right, and that brings up the whole other issue with the hemp grower in Hardwood that got robbed because they thought it was pot, I mean, it's it's a legitimate concern if you're the one that has to live with it for ninety days or seventy five days or whatever.
Well, so, when it goes from seventy five days, it really only starts smelling the last two or three weeks. And then once it starts smelling, you cut it down and bring it indoors where you won't smell it. Um, so, you know, again, it's, goes back to the bylaw that was passed, I mean, the town passing outdoor marijuana bylaw. So, what did the town think they were passing?
I have no idea.
So, we're just going by the bylaws, and if the town doesn't want outdoor marijuana, they can change it.
And without marijuana, you have the fence and you have floodlights and all the rest of that stuff too, or no, is that not relevant?
So, um, with lights, so you don't wanna get marijuana, be hit with lights at night, kinda messes up their cycle. Uh, actually, we're doing automatics, it wouldn't mess up their cycle, um, but no, we, we kinda wanna pitch black at night. You know, if you walk on the property, you, you're gonna get hit with some lights, you know, the cameras are gonna turn on.
Yeah.
Uh, not that the cameras flash lights at you, but, um, we like, we're pitch black at night, so we try to keep it that way.
It'll be dark, but maybe stinky.
Yeah, so in terms of this thing, like, we're, you know, we're moving into the greenhouses as quick as we possibly can.
Right, well, I just know, I mean, in Berlin, somewhere near a gym, gymnastics club, they had a problem with a marijuana grower, and the, the town, the folks that owned that company, ended up, the gymnastics company, ended up going before boards to try to shut it down, because they were an indoor grow, but they didn't have the filtration right, so they're bringing kids into a gym, and the kids are walking out smelling like they smoked pot all day.
Yeah, so that, when we are.
I mean, and they're not right on top of each other, and yet that smells so much to them.
Yeah, that's, seems like some real bad planning, um, but when we have our greenhouses up, you, they're gonna be completely enclosed.
Okay.
So, you won't, it's, when I say completely enclosed, we have a, it's an awesome A-trax system, imagine like a, a, just a big tube, if you will. It takes all your moist, hot air that's in the greenhouse, and you just send it underground in these massive tubes, and it just dries it and cools the air, and you just keep circulating your air. So, we don't like let any air in, well, we don't let air in, because we don't want bugs. And we're completely closed, and we have like radiant heat, air conditioning, so we're like buttoned up as much as.
So, once you get down with your experiment, then it should be fine.
Well, so my experiment, I call it an experiment, um.
Oh, no, it sounds like an experiment.
Yeah, you can, you can, I'll be honest, everybody, you know, you're dealing with, uh, mold, you're dealing with, uh, unknowns, it's an experiment. Um, you know, why would you waste your money growing somewhere you might know there's mold? And we got a real good way to do it, um, but the reality is, is we're limited to how many square feet of canopy we can have per company. So, you wouldn't waste your canopy on outdoor if you could do a greenhouse. So, you know, that's different for the thirty two acres, it's, you know, it's a lot bigger, and no one's even gonna know that's going on, but, um, that's kinda my answer, is if it smells, it's gonna smell for two weeks and that's over. You'd be smelling hemp, hemp as well, so.
I bet you the chicken farm, which is that rule existed, 'cause if they smell, they have, they have to do something.
I mean, there's animals, I mean, next door, and, 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 plain they smell.
Okay, uh, that first, before, actually before you, do you still wanna comment on that from before?
Well, yeah, Helen, I could only twenty six Gardiner Road.
You're next, sir.
Um, I just wanted to comment on, um, I pass sanctuary, which is a, a retail store in Gardner, a minimum of eight times a day. There's never traffic, there's never congestion, congestion, I don't see Cheech and Chong pulling out with smoke com- I mean, it's.
No, that was your guy.
Oh. So, I mean, I don't think that's gonna be a problem, and I think by the time they get up and running, there's gonna be so many, like they said, it's gonna be like a, a liquor store, you know?
Yeah, the, the, the thing is, sixty eight is a high traffic between Worcester and points north for drugs. Just ask, just ask the chief.
Well, I, I just, I don't think we're gonna, I don't know, I don't know, I, I just, I don't think it's gonna be a problem, I'm not saying I'm for or against it, I just think that the town has passed these bylaws um, because we had to. Someone has seen an opportunity where they wanna come into town and purchase some, uh, property, if you're not purchasing it, but you know what I mean, build the facility, they're gonna generate tax dollars, they're doing it the right way, they're doing it the way that we asked them to, and now everyone in this room who had an opportunity to attend every single public meeting, select board meeting, planning board meeting, any meeting that is open to the public, now everybody is coming in and saying, you're trying to make it difficult for these people. I think that, you know, they're doing it the way we've asked them, and now, you know, we're being reactive in, in saying, well. well, is it gonna be like this, it it would be great to have, um, maybe an informational session where you're gonna show what the facility looks like that you're gonna to build, so people don't have the questions that, is it gonna smell? Uh, you know, is, are there gonna be people breaking in at night, you know? It would be nice to be able to have that to inform everyone that has questions.
And I.
I believe this is gonna be answered, a lot of this, the special permit.
It will, and.
After planning, but all all these plans are gonna have to come in, it's gonna show everybody, all the plans from the police department, all the public health, the water runoff, all of that's gonna be spelled out. Even if we approve it, it has to be approved by the state, the state engineers and our engineers. Everybody has to look at that first, we we're not gonna just throw it at everybody, say, here you go. It has a process and a way it's gonna work out, it's regulated by the state, it's regulated by the town bylaw, and everybody has to come into compliance with that, whether it's water runoff, whether it's the odors, whether it's security. I believe they're gonna have a prison setting, I'll be right at home.
Yeah.
Like in thirty years, they let me go, go on good behavior.
All right.
But, um, it's all gonna be regulated, it's gonna be safe, they're not gonna let people in there, they don't want people breaking in like they did over in, uh, which town?
Yeah.
In Hydrick, and they stole the hemp, but, um, thinking it was pot. It it's gonna be a good, safe way to go, and out of the special permit process, we have to comply with the regulations, and committed voice their their concerns about that, and they're gonna have the plans on the table and and present to everybody. We're probably gonna have this, have the gymnasium or the, over in the school, so a lot of folks can come in. So right now, it's according to Mary Harry, like we had at the planning board a couple of weeks ago, we're just, the ball's rolling. These folks are going by the bylaws that we approved. And we have to, we have to go with this, and we have to look at it, and we have to make sure it's safe for us, and it's gonna be good for them.
And I think it's just people don't know what to expect, so it would, it's great.
That's why you're asking questions.
Exactly, and and so.
Right, which is the great of this.
Right, and and if you had some sort of presentation where it could be nicely packaged, everybody could understand it,
Yeah, special permit, yeah.
and, you know, that would be great. I mean, I'm sure everybody would love to see that, they could understand it better. I think it is such a new thing, being legal, that, you know, nobody really knows what to expect.
Yep.
And I I think that it's great that we're getting in sort of, you know, on the ground level, that you wanna come to our town and and, you know, generate tax dollars, because I remember, I mean, I sat on the finance committee for five years. I remember years we didn't have a police department because we couldn't afford it. Now, look at, we might have some tax dollars where we wouldn't have to cut things out of the school, or all of these other things that, you know, it it would be great.
And we'll do a, like, a, you know, that's what we're planning on doing, we do like a real presentation at the special permit meetings, cause that's where everyone really comes. There'll be a lot of people.
Okay, in the back?
Um, my question is, uh, I'm in the butter, um, across the street from the, uh, the fireplace farm. My question is very simple, what plans have you made for parking? You already stated that you're gonna have probably seventy people in in that establishment working, plus the customers. What assurance are we going to have that I'm not gonna see cars lined up on on the sixty-eight or across my front lawn, uh, that type of thing?
Um.
There is room there, and I think it's.
Yeah, no, there's there's, there's a whole bunch of cars already there. They're right next door at the junk place, um, but it it they're all over the place.
Don't go there.
Don't go there. Um, so there's already cars lined up there, um, what we're gonna do is, you know, when we say seventy people, that's spread over seven days a week. Um, so hopefully never be seventy people there at once. Uh, but the plan at fifty-six gardener is to move the greenhouse to the absolute back of the property, so there's two point six acres. So imagine the back acre, you go as wide as you can to the limits, and then you come up as, you know, and then you kinda close. So the entire front of that property, um, where there's the wood stove shop, and then that other building, they're coming down. Um, to make room for parking, so there should be, you know, over an an acre and a half of parking.
I mean, it would be great, I'm sure you'd be pleased if you saw them packing out on sixty-eight, it would mean you're extra busy.
Well, yeah, I think, um, I don't think we could allow that, yeah, we definitely can't allow that. Um, and then, you know, there's the nineteen acres across the street, so if it ever came down to it, park across the street, I guess, and make a sidewalk, and make a crosswalk.
Oh, you mean over the other.
Yeah, but I I there's enough room that we, like, I've done the calculations where we're gonna be in Templeton, cause we need two hundred parking spots. And there's definitely enough room, from what I saw, making two hundred parking spots, to make like seventy parking spots at, um, you know, in front of that spot. But all that has to go through the special permit process, like, literally, like, you know, we measure up, so we have a surveyor do that. So we actually, yeah, he actually makes a plan showing our parking, how many parking spots there can be.
So you have given it, huh?
Yeah, so that's our big worry, is like what we had in Templeton, I just had to buy another piece of property just for parking, which is crazy, cause we have so many cars. The other thing I didn't mention, which is really good for anyone concerned about, uh, like runoff and environmental, um, cause there's no sewer system here, we gotta get a holding tank. So everything besides, you know, regular bathroom stuff, bathrooms like the sewer, a septic system. Um, but all of our stuff from the greenhouse operations, that all goes into a holding tank, sucked out, whenever they suck it out, when it gets close to the fill or whatever, and then they just bring it to some other town and put it down their sewer. Well, that's right, right, because if they put it down their sewer, so in Templeton, we could just, no, no, they do. Well, can you?
The treatment.
The treatment plant, treatment plant.
Doesn't go to somebody's sewer. It goes out someone's sewer system, and bring it to Boston and just send it right down the sewer. So what we do in Templeton is we're hooking up to, uh, Gardner sewer. So they, in 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 Hubbardstine, in in Royalston, I have to do it, in Phillipsen, I'll have to do it, we have a holding tank. Where they, you know, everything just gets put in there, it's not that it's bad stuff, um, it's just, for whatever reason, they make you haul it away. But if you were connected to, like, Gardner sewer system, it just goes right in there, just like ordinary stuff, so.
All right, so the, so, uh, um, before, I will take some more, but, um, I am, uh, you know, we are, we are well into into our evening, uh, session here, and rightfully so. Um, but we're not gonna do it forever, because this isn't the final meeting, okay? So, uh, a lot of, uh, so, uh, uh, we're gonna have, I'm gonna take a few more, uh, a few more comments, and then we have some other business that we're gonna have to take care of, cause that's why we're here as well, um, but so maybe another ten or fifteen minutes, I'm just sort of setting the table there, nobody feel, um, you know, put off by that, but, um, we do, we do, we do have to to get to some other things eventually, so, um, anyway, is that, uh, in the back there first, Ellen and Tom?
Yeah, have you sought any property tax relief on any of the buildings you've put in any of the surrounding communities?
Have we sought property tax relief?
Yeah.
It's a good idea, I didn't know they did that, no.
They don't.
No, we, in all of our agreements, it actually says that we're gonna pay taxes on the property we put up, some smart lawyer put that in there. Maybe they know, like you do, though.
So there were no, uh, agreements that you sought with the town?
No, they're literally in our host community agreement, it says we're gonna pay taxes on all the, they call it real property.
Right.
There's a whole paragraph on that, so.
Are you, are you a m- a member of a finance group, and the other two people here, kind of, um, assistance? Because I got the same impression from the lady who asked, asking of you earlier, that you were financing it, and you had alluded to the fact that you might be leaving in a year, or moving on, or moving forward, and your two partners were going to be, you left with the impression that they'd be taking over.
Yeah, so, um, I wouldn't call them partners, so basically, how this all kinda happened.
Yeah.
Um, is, I was interested in the wood stove as a retail store, um, but I'm only allowed three retail stores. So by the time, from my company, um, so by the time this all kinda happened, I got a retail store in Boston, no offense, Hubbardstine, um, and it's just a different, you know, beast, so that put me at my limit, um, and so then, talked to my friend, and he was really interested in retail stores, as well as the cultivation he's doing. Um, so, basically, I just kinda came up with, well, I'm stepping aside, but I wanna do outdoor real quick. So my idea was, you know, I wanted to do outdoor, throw it in that, uh, the wood stove shop, kinda, we have to redo, put some insulation in, put some A C, key, hook up the heat, so basically, I just, you know, at that point, said, well, I just wanna do some outdoor, let me get my money back, and then, you know, you can do a retail store, cause I'm at my limit. Um, so, you know, he's got his own financing, you know, I'm not financing Bowie, um.
And everything's, everything is, when you go through the CCC, um, I'm taking a family loan for this, basically. Um, and when you go through this, the CCC, everything is combed over by forensic accountants, there's no duffel bags of money, like, this is not, there's absolutely nothing, they track all the money, like, just, you know, it's all, it's all looked at. Everything is looked at.
You're a separate entity.
From him.
From him.
This is Royalston Farm, and I'm paper crane provisions.
And she would be.
I'm in Vanguard's.
Okay. So you're all three separate entities working here.
Separate, yep.
So, do you guys, do you two people have to go through the same discreet review of CCC?
Every, 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 every licensed business, any type of marijuana business in the state, and it's, it's basically, you know, eighteen months of them looking at everything very closely, more or less. It's a really long and painful process.
Tom?
I would just, uh, like to say that, I think all these concerns people have, and I I I'm a neighbor, we have a big holdings next door, uh, you really need to read the regulation to understand what they have to go through to get this thing, and that's one of the reasons why we decided to rely on the state for their regulations, because it is a really difficult thing. But also, in the special permit process, things like parking and and lights and all that stuff can be addressed in the special permit, and the planning board can put special, uh, permit regulations on them, as long as they don't already ban it. But, I mean, for parking and stuff, they can really do that traffic flow, they can do that, they can require that they have town police in there. And there's lots of things that they can put in there, that they, I I think we really just need to see their, what they're, what they're planning on doing.
And also, the the motivations, sorry to interrupt you, but the motivation to not break any rules and to make sure that everything is followed, you know, very closely in terms of the, just, you know, how the state wants you to operate, all you have to do is take a look through the CMRs and through the regs, and check out the the fee and fine schedule for, you know, infractions on certain things. I mean, a lot of, they start at five thousand, and they go up to fifty, I mean, they get, they, it's it's hot, it's, you're highly motivated. These businesses, if you can get them off the ground, which is hard, if you're not a corporate entity with money from, like, John Boehner's company, Acre Ridge, or from one of the big, uh, Canadian companies, it's real hard to get off the ground, because you need property that doesn't, you know, have, is not tied to banks, you need someone to help you buy the property, I mean, it requires a lot of money. If you can actually do that and then get through the cannabis commission's process, I mean, they don't leave any stones unturned. It's like, that's why there's only, cannabis has been legal for three years, and until just recently, there were only, like, you know, really just two, and now there's twenty-four shops, or twenty-two, but, you know, it's been three years, I mean, how many? Yeah, it's 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 a slow process, it's it's a very, very, very slow process where they just, you know, they look at everything, look at everything.
Well, on that note. Well, so, uh, all right, yeah, Nancy?
So I just, the parking thing, I was very concerned, if I live around the corner on High Street, we're we're just a a small street, but we're very affected because we're right around the corner, and, um, you'd be asked with the the parking situation, but that doesn't really enter the whole flow of traffic thing, most, a lot of us moved here to this town, like, twenty, thirty years ago, to have a quiet place, to, um, have a farm community, you know? And when we first, I was at all those town meetings, so I know it got passed, and I was thinking, well, if they put it, like, the solar companies, I don't know how familiar you are, but with the town's history, but the solar companies, you know, came in and were like, oh, let's make them, you know, on the side roads, and let's make them so they're not obvious, and let's build nice fences, and all these requirements for them to be inconspicuous. And, um, they wanna put a Dunkin' Donuts down on the corner of sixty and sixty-two, no, you know, that wasn't gonna fly. They don't want people interrupting the traffic flow, and and I'm thinking, where have all those ideas gone now that we're thinking of putting a retail store, you know, on the, right on sixty-eight? You know, I'm not talking about the other two situations you could give up, where we have a greenhouse.
Yeah.
Um, and growing it, I think this is just a, something different, a different course of a different color having this retail store. And I think that's where you're gonna hit most of the, you know, questions and problems that people have. Um, living around the corner, and I have a neighborhood on High Street who just lost their son to drug overdose. I have people who, I know a lot of people on the streets who are very concerned with the traffic, with little children, don't want the idea. We we have, my grandchildren ride their bikes down the middle of High Street, you know, we came to this area for that reason. And to all of a sudden have lots of traffic, and I I'm wondering where you, I know you talked about where you live, I'm wondering where you guys live, and if you would want to live next door around the corner from a retail store. Um, I want you to think about this, I want the people in town to think about it, and, um, I just, the whole idea, and being a teacher from the town, and thinking of these children that I had, which are some of them in this room, and think about them being able, and I know, I know, I'm not, I have a son who's in college, okay?
Yeah.
And, um, I'm not saying that it's not abuse and all that, I'm just saying, in this town, this, in this property where you're thinking of putting it, um, we only had one time, and I've lived here almost thirty years, one time, we've had people on our street breaking it, and they broke into Danielle's property, who was over here speaking, they broke into cars on our street, one time, like, a couple of weeks, the police caught they, there were teenagers looking for drug money. And we're talking about an expensive, you know, something that costs quite a bit of money, and whether you're twenty-one, or you're twenty-two, or you're twenty-three, and you need that money, and you want that product, we live around the corner. Most of us don't lock our houses, most of us don't lock our cars, and I don't know where you guys live, but that's where, how it is in this town for most people. And that, to me, that's gonna change, having that store around the corner, I feel, is probably gonna change my whole way of life. I'm gonna make myself and maybe some other people feel like moving out. So it it really emotionally is hard.
Yeah, I'm sorry, um.
Don't be sorry.
No, I guess in terms of the, uh, in terms of like someone, I I don't know if you met, like, suggested someone, like, who wants our product, would go rob someone and then come buy us, cause if there's someone that would go rob someone, I'm sure there's someone that, they know someone to go buy product for like sixty percent less than our product, so they're probably gonna go buy it from someone cheaper. I'm just guessing, um, because if they're breaking into houses, they probably know people, um, who are selling drugs illegally. Um, but in terms of the traffic, I mean, across the street, there's a pizza store, you know what I mean? There's a pizza store.
They have three or four cars there usually.
Yeah, so, I mean, by the time that retail store's open, you know, there's gonna be a store on the bar, on Berry, you know, south. There's gonna be a store five miles to the north next to the ninety-nine, so there's gonna be stores all over, so, you know, we've done a little bit of research. Um, and people are gonna stop on their way home, they're gonna stop, you know, people aren't gonna come to Hubbardstine to buy marijuana. They're just not, there's so many other stores they could stop at, I mean, it's just, it would be kinda crazy to live in Templeton and drive to Hubbardstine for your marijuana, cause you pass three stores coming over here, but, I mean, and we'll do a traffic survey, we're gonna do that, so.
Just on that note, we had kids who lived in my street, teenagers, who went and robbed houses and banks in other communities, and never robbed in Hubbardstine.
Robbing banks, that's.
So I'm thinking that people could come, you know, people could come here from this surrounding community, just says they didn't wanna buy it where people know them.
That's true, a lot of people would be embarrassed, that's a good point, uh, to buy it, cause it's still such a taboo.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we'll do a traffic survey, and we'll present that, um, so that's one of the things we do for the retail store. In terms of our employees, I mean, they're gonna come in the morning and leave at night, hopefully some live in the town. So basically, I'm, my answer for traffic is, we'll do a traffic survey and show people what it's gonna be like. I'm sorry if that's not the best answer, I don't really have a good answer for you, any real answer, but.
Well, um, I don't see any more hands right now, uh, so I guess, uh, we're gonna end it there. Um, so, you know, uh, I I think, I hope everyone's able to, at least to preliminarily get out what, um, what they want. Um, I don't think there's any real need for us to sort of summarize how things have gone, if anybody wants to watch it on TV again, they can. Um, but I I think overall, we we, um, I, we hope that, you know, that, I think the 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 overlying sentiment was that we're concerned. You know, uh, as a, as a community, we're concerned that problems are gonna arise, and, um, problems that that we didn't ask for. So, um, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to 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 make sure that you guys are doing everything you're supposed to do. Um, and, you know, um, you know, I guess, I guess that's it, do you guys wanna finish off with anything here, planning board?
I I would like to just ask you, Dan, uh, to explain what the next steps are, I think that's a fair statement, given the fact that some people have indicated that they were not aware of a lot of the things that precursed this year. Uh, now that we've gone through this, uh, community outreach.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it will be cool, not only the public here, but also the public who's gonna be listening to this here online, uh, to understand where it is that this goes the next step.
Okay, and and not to pass the buck here, Ryan and Damon, but, no, I am, because they're the ones who need to follow, I I mean, he's the one who needs to follow what the next step is, so.
But even, even from, even.
But even, even from, even from the Harborsen perspective, because there are certain steps that need to pass.
Yep.
Some of which will go through the planning board.
Yep.
Some of which will still go through your area, I mean, the select board.
Yep.
And I'm sure that there's others, so I think it'd be good for the, for the town to understand what are the next steps and how they can potentially be involved.
Okay, and still, I'm gonna throw it to Damon, because the next step will come through him, so if you could just talk about after tonight, what, what's next?
So the next step is we, uh, enter negotiations for an HCA.
Which we, we, we already have a draft, um, uh, so, you wanna jump in here Ryan too?
The, the next step is a host community agreement, so this is a process that is controlled by our bylaw, which is mimicking the state law. So the host community agreement is an agreement between the town and the applicant, the entity, as to, um, how their relationship with the town as a business will go. Uh, that's negotiated, we've reached out to all of our peer towns and all of our peer towns are currently also going through this process. The host community outreach meeting and then the host community agreement, so we have lots of examples. We've also engaged our town council, but not fully yet, because we wanted to see how this went before we started spending money. But our lawyers will be heavily involved in helping us make sure we're protecting the town and following all applicable local and state laws. So once that's negotiated, we'll come to the board of selectmen probably around January twenty-seventh or maybe the next meeting, depending on how the negotiation goes. Um, and then it gets sent back to the planning board for a special permitting process. Simultaneously, uh, the applicants will be going through their licensing process from the CCC, which is not our control. That's a state regulated authority, just like alcohol licenses are.
Is there a potential for community input in what you currently have as a draft for the HCA? What I'm asking you is, is do you have a draft that is presentable? Is that not something that you are expecting the community here to be seeing beforehand? Until it gets to the select board, when is the, when is the opportunity?
Let me jump in real quick, so it's a negotiation.
I understand that.
So, due to the fact that it's a negotiation, you know, some of, you know, we still haven't had full discussions whether or not some of that would go into executive session, so that we may have the best position possible as a negotiating party against another negotiating party.
So let me rephrase the question, this is, when is the first time that you feel that the community here at large has the opportunity to not only view it, but potentially even comment on this here?
Prior to it being brought to the select board as a, uh, uh, something to vote on?
Or even at that time, if that is the first time that that, okay, very good.
That would be the time.
I think it's just important for the community to understand and know that, it's also to make sure that we're not, you know, people don't feel disenfranchised.
It's also important to understand that there's, there, there is a template for this process.
Mm-hmm.
So though we, we could request X, Y, and Z, not all of it's gonna be allowed, or if you, I mean, you can shoot it as a, as a ban. Alright, so if the town tries to ban this because the, the, we try and ban it as a town, the bylaws says it's allowed?
Yeah.
So you would need a, you would need a vote, you'd have to go to the ballot and, and to do any type of ban because it was allowed by vote. So, you can't write the agreement so it be a proxy ban. And so there's only so much that can be put in it, but there is community input. And then you follow the models of the towns around you to make sure that everyone is, is getting the same thing. Lots of guidance at the state level and from our legal counsel. But yes, send any comments you want in and obviously interact with the board.
Okay, alright, planning board, okay, for now?
For now.
For now, right, uh. One more, this is it.
Brian, does the select board have to vote for the community agreement? Is it something that's required by the state law? Could the selectmen say, yeah, that's real nice, but we vote against it, and then it's dead? Or is it, that, that's not, is, I don't.
So I'd wanna engage council to answer that properly, but it's my understanding it's required for the license.
But if they don't approve it, then they can't get the license?
I'm not sure that's, I would have to ask council that, I'm not comfortable answering that.
I don't think that question's been answered in the state yet.
And part of the answer to that question's gonna involve whether or not the town is then subject to potential litigation for rejection. So, just answer, oh no, I, I hear ya, I'm just saying, all that, that's something that, that Ryan can find out, so, alright. But we're gonna move on, um, I thank everybody for coming out, we'll, we'll take a, just a short recess here, everybody who's not gonna be engaged into the rest of our meeting. Um, so, goodnight.
Everybody, thanks.
Thanks.
I thought it, cause we didn't have a drive-through.
What's the franchise, you know, like when you're a franchise, you can have certain amount of places you can have it. There was a volume per year to make our franchise give up a small.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more item to sign.
Tell you what I know.
Oh, we have one more item to sign.
Thank you.
Is your brother back in?
You have yours first.
Oh, I was caught in trouble all day long over that. I turned off the TV though, so at least I did.
Thank you.
It says I, uh.
And the, the TVs off, so I won't blow it up, because we don't wanna blow up the same song.
Even though you're twenty-six.
Alright, so we are gonna get going again, uh, we commence with the, uh, the meeting, um, we still have another item here with the planning board. So, um, uh, that item is?
So, last year at this time, we discussed district local technical assistance, which is grant state, grant money available for various things, but for our instances normally used for planning purposes. So, we currently have a draft grant application that's in your packets. Uh, we would like to apply for the, another master plan chapter, the last one that we need before implementation, which would be land use. So that would require the support from the board of selectmen and the planning board, um, we get draft letters out and apply to.
We have, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum, so.
I think it's important for us to declare this.
We have to agree, according to Christina.
I apologize.
The planning board.
Oh, that's right.
Has to, say we're in agreement?
Yes, so that's what I was, both boards would wanna.
I was just trying to get them to not leave, yeah, he's back, okay.
Thank you.
So we still have a quorum and we know, we're all, we're informed.
Yep.
Um, and we think Mr. Hume's a big asset and this would really help us sort out the chapter on land use.
Yeah.
The master plan, so we're in favor of the grant. And we would recommend that you, you know, whatever the official vote is, to authorize, um.
So each board would vote if they want to, uh, use, cause you can apply for other things, but we're recommending that the LT grant be used to apply for another master plan chapter, the land use chapter.
How much is it for? You know?
It's, it's kind of indeter, they give you enough for their agency to do, it's not really a money, it's hard to explain, but they'll give you one service. So this would be a service that we can apply for.
Okay.
I make that motion for the planning board, do we need that?
Yeah.
Okay, you want a second?
So I just wanna make sure that I understood. Cause I was, I was distracted, I apologize.
Okay, so the motion is to, um, approve, uh, the.
District local technical assistant.
The distant, yeah, district local technical assistant grant application for, to help develop the, uh, land use chapter of the master plan.
And that is what you have proposed?
Yes, sir.
Right.
We'll second that motion from the planning board's side.
Planning board, any further discussion, you three, okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Um, okay, I'll, from our side.
I'll make that motion for the select board.
I'll second it.
Okay, and quick, just quick discussion, I, I don't think there's dissension, but we've been, we've been on this track for a couple of years now, getting this, uh, this master plan here, so I don't see any reason why we would slow down that process, so, uh, any further discussion?
No.
Uh, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll get letters to each chair to sign and we'll get that grant application in and finish the master plan.
Okay, cool.
Awesome.
Alright, so you guys gonna adjourn?
Um, yes, we'll adjourn.
We make a motion to adjourn.
We'll adjourn, are we, if we adjourn, we have to leave, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Just can't deliberate, you can stare.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Goodnight, folks.
Night.
I just wanna hear what you're doing with Ragged Hill Roadblocks, is what I was gonna say.
No, I, I think what, what Ryan just said, which is you, you, you just can't, um.
Deliver it.
Deliver it.
Okay, alright.
I can attend, but not deliberate.
Okay.
Sounds good.
This is not deliberation, we're discussing it.
Now you're just resident.
Alright, so. So additional fit business.
Well, I brought Mike back to torch room.
Question, this, I did kinda miss it actually.
Hey, it's Howser.
Welcome back, yes, how you doing? Please, uh, who are you?
Sorry about that, Michael Staller, um, chairman of the capital planning committee. So I'm here to, uh, work with Ryan to present the, uh, FY twenty-one to twenty-five capital plan.
So, Mr. Chairman, by charter, the board of selectmen appoints the capital planning committee to consider the revisions in, in the next year of the capital plan that's submitted to me and then presented to you and the finance committee as part of the budget process. So that is what this is, and it's, uh, draft form, ready for your comments and approval.
You wanna just talk a little bit about, uh, the brief little history of this?
Sure, so we have a five-member board, um, two of us are here tonight. So it's myself, Bill Murray, um, Stephanie Alice, who's a member at large in the community. Um, Francois is the planning board representative and David Conahan is a finance committee representative. So we have two representatives from other town boards and three members at large. Uh, we started meeting in September, uh, looking at what our goals are gonna be for what we want to, to do for our committee. Um, we then moved into evaluating what the capital requests were for the, for the different departments and trying to prioritize them based on, um, money, um, financing mechanism and also, uh, what best fits the needs of the department and what can move the departments along and help the town, um, the best kind of early on. So we, we, we focused a lot of our attention on FY twenty-one and, um, made sure that what we present to you guys is, is, is really succinct for next year. Um, and then we moved into kind of a four to five-year capital plan, which of course, it's tough to, to plan four or five years out, but we have a, a rough framework for, uh, all of FY twenty-four.
And did you have meetings with departments specifically?
Um, we didn't meet with departments specifically, we had a lot of correspondence with the departments, we had some, we had Travis, Travis?
Travis was with us.
Travis was with us.
Library.
Uh, yes, I forgot that, yeah, so Tom Robinson came in, uh, library had a lot of asks, which I'll go over in detail. Um, the library had a lot of asks and we, Tom Robinson came in and went over some of the, 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 the problems they're facing and the, and sort of a plan that they had that we helped, um, make more succinct. Uh, so, a lot of the, the departments, really the DPW and library were the two biggest asks that we had. A lot of the other departments had relatively small things that we were able to just, um, focus on correspondence with them.
Okay.
So, real quick, just incorporating this into the town's financial management and policy goals. All of this was set up for the CIPC to understand what potential revenue sources there were for all of these projects. All the decision-making was tied into the town's policies and goals to include thinking about reserves and, and other options. So this was presented, um, I have it up on the screen and this is on page four of your draft at the bottom. The policy targets, the, um, the committee was asked to, to think about spending about six percent of the operating budget, which we project to be about nine point seven million, that's a little high, but we're using that number right now. Um, six percent is the goal to spend on capital in order to maintain our town assets. Currently, we would like to have about two hundred and ninety-three thousand in debt in our operating budget. We're around that target, around three percent, and the rest would be paid for using free cash. So that, that information was given to the, the committee for their consideration. And then, of course, we went over last year's, uh, capital expense summary and, um, a lot of education to the CIPC about not only just using free cash or what's usually found in the town meeting warrant, but also other sources of funds to include CPA, um, grants in Holden Hospital, other accounts that we have that can be used to fund capital. It's just a review of last year. Total capital with debt was six, six hundred and forty-four thousand in a catch-up year for almost seven percent of the operating budget.
Would that pay by free cash similarly?
Uh, primarily free cash, also some general fund use, some CPA monies. Holden Hospital and some, a grant. And then a lot of that's debt as well that's in the operating budget, so general. So then, the, uh, committee put together this document, which would be a guiding document, a recommendation to yourselves and the finance committee. Um, and there was two large discussions that are just here to frame decision-making moving forward. So one of them is that almost all departments, several of the departments are having difficulty making their long-term decisions on capital because of municipal building space, which is not a surprise. In particular, the library is having a lot of difficulty deciding what their five to ten-year plan is gonna be, cause they don't know whether or not that should incorporate the town offices or not. And vice versa, uh, public safety is, um, is still looking to solve some of their, their many problems that, that also tie up some of their budget numbers as well, and then town.
Are they doing alternatives in parallel then, to, to have, you know, different tracks with different options?
It's a status quo, um, but some operating budget monies could be shifted if building space was, was opened up. And this, none of this is a surprise, but in terms of the long-term capital plan, the, some decision needs to be made here, as it, as that's been true for, for many years. And then also, um, as, as I've talked about before and the CIPC went over, the debt, the debt for the town falls off dramatically after twenty twenty-three because the Rhodes project comes off the books, about a hundred and seventy thousand in borrowing power. Um, so what to do with that debt level will be an important decision in the next two to three years, which is why it's called out specifically in the capital plan. So, some big projects that, uh, could be considered, the center school roof replacement is, is currently pending, there'll be more on that later. Municipal building space and, and large vehicle purchases are, are normal targets for that size debt.
So there are no considerations necessarily made for whether or not new unknown facilities such as new solar or marijuana establishments would be part of the town budget, right?
None, if, if you made me make a recommendation to you right now, it would be that all the marijuana money that was discussed tonight would be put towards capital, because there's no assurance after five years that marijuana money would continue. So, it's a community impact fee, meaning you have to demonstrate that there's this level of community impact by the fee. So, a lot of legal circles are saying it's gonna be difficult for municipalities after five years to say it's exactly three percent of cost impact to the community and that we're not just using the money for other purposes. Doesn't mean it's gonna go away, but I wouldn't wanna use that as a recurring revenue if it's only gonna be for five years.
Yeah, agreed, okay.
So it could solve some of these problems that we're discussing, um, it is a revenue source, if that's the way the town chooses to go. So I'm gonna kick it back to the chairman here.
Alright, so as, as Ryan said, one of the biggest, um, problems we had was just not knowing what the municipal building situation is, especially when it came to the library, which I'll go over here. Um, when they came in, they had a lot, they have a lot of different needs in that library and they kinda had a, a, a plan that was all over the place from an architectural study, they wanted it funded next year to replacing the boiler in five years and stuff. So that, that really is an unknown, as, which is not a surprise to any of us. Um, in front of you, you're gonna see two different capital expenditures, um, the kind of the longer list, the first list here is what's funded from free cash, from the budget, um, so that's, that's kind of real town money right there. The, the next one, which we'll go over, where it says alternative funding sources, this is grant, grant funding, is what we think we can, we can get grants from.
Is that what's in yellow, Mike, or is?
No, so the.
The whole page.
The, the whole, so the fir, the first page is just, is town money, budget money, um, the second page is grant funding.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the colors go, um, the greens are additions to the capital plan that came in this year. The yellows are things that we've moved up a little bit and the ones that are not colored are. The yellows are things that we've moved up a little bit, and the ones that are not colored are things that in the capital plan have not changed. So to just go down the list a little bit, um, we'll start, we'll just start at top. So, although it's not next year, forty-five thousand dollars for mini excavator, we moved up, I think, two years, three, one year, two years?
Two years.
Two years. Um, just because the DPW demonstrated a need for a mini excavator to get work done more efficiently, rather than trying to use a backhoe all the time. So that, that will hopefully be for next year. Um, one of the other things, there, there are two big asks this year for them, one is an asphalt hot box, one is a dump truck with plow. The dump truck with plow, uh, replaces a two thousand six, uh, four fifty, and we're replacing it with a, with a new four fifty, basically the same design. Um, it's gonna have sanders, gonna have a plow, it's gonna have some work boxes in the back. Um, the O-six four fifty is, is pretty beat up and old and uh, not working well all the time, so.
And we bumped this, right?
We did bump this, yeah. We did bump this, so we're, we, we felt as a committee that it's time to, to replace that, that truck this year. Um, asphalt hot box was an interesting ask by the DPW, but it, it actually supplies a pretty good need. For many, many years, there, we've been getting by with the cold patch, which we all know works terribly. One of the problems with not having, uh, in the winter, not having a hot box is we have no ability to use hot patch and, and hot asphalt. So, what they can do, uh, in the summertime when the, when they're open, as far as the plants go, the asphalt plants, they can use the hot box to extend the life of, of the asphalt that they're using for the day. But more importantly, in the wintertime, they can buy a bunch of asphalt in the fall before the plants close, bring it back to the DPW yard, spread it out, let it dry, and break it up and put it in a mound. And with the hot box, which is basically a trailer-pulled, um, propane-heated box, they can put all those chunks of asphalt back in that box, heat it up overnight, make it nice and liquid again, and then they can go out and repair our roads in the winter. Um, especially with the addition of the rollover that we purchased last year. So it's a more durable repair for our roads, um, and uh, you know, something that we thought was, was useful for the DPW to have. Um, going down the line, I mean, a backpack blower, a walk-behind blower, I don't think we need to discuss that much. Uh, small items, emergency response truck from the fire chief, this is gonna replace the chief's, um, the chief's truck right now, which is an old Ford Explorer. Um, this is gonna be a two thousand twenty, uh, Ford Explorer. Uh, forty-two thousand dollars for that, actually outfits it with the lights and the radios and everything else he needs for that, for that truck right there.
The other one's gonna be pretty old.
It's old, it's, it's almost twenty years old.
Is it?
Yeah. Um, going down the list, so the, the, the biggest one here, library foundation, which I wanna talk to you a little bit about. So the library, again, had a, a lot of things on their list over the next five years, they had a new boiler, um, they wanted an architectural plan to remodel the library, they had a foundation repair. Uh, was it a bunch of different, electrical repair, Tom Robinson came in and did a very good presentation, which, which I hope he, he gives to the select board also about all the deficiencies in the library, from plumbing to electrical to structural to everything that's in there. It's, it's an old building, he's a lot of repair. But the most pressing one is the foundation. Um, there was some settlement in the foundation in one area, cracking in the area, there's some water intrusion uh, in, in the basement area where the, the old, the meeting room is in the back. So, uh, Tom had gotten a quote, um, for repair. I guess he had somebody come around and look at the foundation and to repair some blocks and fix some grading. Um, they got a price of about fifty-seven thousand dollars. At our last meeting of the Capital Planning Committee, we discussed that, and we luckily had Bill, who's involved in civil engineering and all this, to, to really weigh in. Um, and he, he's, he's afraid the fifty-seven thousand dollars is, is too little money to fix the foundation. Um, so what we're recommending as a, as a Capital Planning Committee, you guys, is, is not use the fifty-seven thousand dollars to go out and just get a quote to repair the foundation, but to use up to fifteen thousand dollars. It was estimated by our group between five to fifteen thousand dollars for a foundation assessment. Someone's gonna have to come in and dig test holes around the edge of the foundation to see what we're not seeing from the outside. The fifty-seven thousand, in the library's estimation, was really just for grading, fixing some drainage, moving some blocks around, and, and that's it. But if we're gonna spend money, we really need to, to look and see what's wrong. Is, is the foundation gonna undercut, is there, is there actual structure underneath the foundation still? Um, there's a gutter that, on the driveway side over here, that just goes from the roof direct, directly into the ground, um, with water just going under the foundation.
During these assessments, you can use dye tests too, which are in a role towards figuring out where that water's actually going, from where it goes into some spot toward the actual crack it's coming to, to find out what conduit it's coming, so those are, 'cause most of the stuff you can't see.
You can't see. So we're recommending to reserve up to fifteen thousand dollars of that fifty-seven thousand, and have a contractor come out and actually do a full foundation assessment of the library. Um, if it doesn't cost that much, great, there's money left for repair. Um, we may, it may just be all grading and some fixing of some blocks, it may be a lot more. So, what we're suggesting to you guys is fifteen, up to fifteen thousand for a foundation assessment, the remainder of that for this year to be used for repair, and then we can certainly prioritize if there's bigger, bigger things that we need to do for the foundation, or maybe it is, again, some simple, simple stuff, but um, we, we really suggest that we get a foundation assessment first.
So when you, can I just ask a question on that?
Sure.
So, when you say the remainder to be used is, is a repair, so some amount of money is spent, let's call it, whatever, fifteen thousand, just to max it out there. So then there's a balance of money that we would then use somehow, right, though? So we'd have to have, what, somebody give a bunch of options with some alternates to be able to get to whatever we could afford? We could do X, Y, and Z, but not A and A' or whatever else, something like that?
Correct, because actually, the, the library initially, um, only won thirty-five thousand dollars for foundation repair.
Okay.
Um, we actually were able to bump it up to fifty-seven thousand, and I, that's probably still too little for the, for the repair. We could be, we could be surprised that it's just superficial stuff. But yes, that's what we're suggesting, is to use up to, um, Bill had suggested that it shouldn't be any more than fifteen, he's hoping a lot less for the assessment. But earmark up to fifteen for an assessment, and then whatever's left, again, like you said, Dan, kind of go the laundry list of what needs to be done and what we can do with the rest of that money.
Okay.
And if there's bigger items, that might have to be moved till next year.
A question I'd like to ask.
Sure.
Um, because I read this, this afternoon, and everything seems to be centering around the, the key thing is our building situation. Would, did you folks discuss the possibility of what if, what we presently have in, in the basement is removed? Because then that becomes a library.
Correct.
And it's eligible for a lot of money, grant-wise.
Right.
Which we've known about for years, it was.
That, that was, that was, we didn't get into the building, it wasn't our charge this year, was to get into the building, per se. Uh, but we did discuss that. Um, because that opens up a lot of different possibilities, and there's grant money for the, for, I mean, one of the things the library wants to do is fix the electrical and to fix the flooring and all that kinda stuff, but we, we held off on a lot of that because of this reason. The foundation, however, is, is the, the structure of the building.
Yep.
And that, it may not be, it might be five years or ten years before we see a municipal building, so we wanted to, the first thing we wanted to do was, was make sure the foundation is, is set.
And would that come under uh, any kind of a grant, like because it's a historical building as well?
It does not, on, on the other page, you'll see, there's some other library things in for lighting upgrades and boiler upgrades, um, that are grant, that can be grant-funded through green communities. So we do have some other library repairs that we're gonna do under green communities, but this is, there are no grant monies available for this.
Thanks.
Um, next down the line is vehicle, oh, actually, since I'm on the library, if you move over to FY twenty twenty-five, architect assessment for library renovations, this initially, the library had come in and wanted this upfront. Um, but we didn't think that was a good use of money, because we can't renovate the library until we actually can make the library fully. So we put that out of twenty twenty-five as a placeholder, we're not necessarily expecting that to be spent that year, but just more as a reminder that, you know, there has to be something done with the library eventually.
Can I just comment, and I, and I agree with that too, especially when there's a reality of what you just said there. Because you can always sort of project future costs, but it's, it's, um, it's unnecessary uh, to try to be really accurate with those if you don't have to be, because they can fluctuate and the economy can go in all different directions. So, if it's not critical to actually do it, it makes more sense to push that off.
Yes, absolutely. Um, vehicle camera and storage server, this is from the police department. This, uh, right now they have cameras in the, the police cars. And at the end of every shift, they have to be brought in and manually downloaded in real time to a storage archive, which is uh, very time-consuming. So the police chief wanted to get, uh, systems which are now available, which basically are wifi, so when the car pulls up, it will automatically send everything over to a server, dedicated server which is secure. And download automatically, you don't have to touch it, and it's secure in this, in this, um, server, and they can access it later on, rather than having a manual system with USB into a computer and things like that. Um, Curtis Field Bandstand Roof, uh, the roof is, uh, is pretty deteriorated, so we had three quotes. Um, three different options between regular asphalt shingles, and there was a composite shingle, and there was cedar. Cedar's currently what's on there now. Um, it was cost-effective at twelve thousand dollars, the cedar roof's been on there forever, and uh, since the original roof on the bandstand. So, we recommend that we just replace it with the, the original cedar roof again. Um, but will we still talk about getting Monty Tech students for that one?
Yeah, or possibly CPA.
CPA for that, so there could be some other funding mechanisms for that, but if not, the roof does need to be repaired to maintain the integrity of that bandstand.
We'd wanna talk to Parks, Monty Tech is great, but slow.
So, true. True.
Whether or not they could accomplish it in a certain timeframe, so as not to damage the rest of the bandstand, would be important.
Uh, town office IT hardware and software, this was something that's been planned for several years, we left that there. Slade building paving, fifteen thousand dollars is not a full paving of the entire parking lot, that's in, magnitude's more money than that.
Can we just stop for one sec, sorry, um, I just wanna, the, the IT hardware and software, is this sort of the final one?
Yes, so this would be the end of a five-year replacement cycle, so Windows Seven replacement is almost complete. They're coming in in January to finish the rest of our personal computers. The rest of this money is thirty thousand would be to do all of the, um, the computers inside the ambulance, the fire truck, and the, um, police, which are much more expensive, because of the way they need to be protected and secured. So they're about double the cost, so we were able to do twenty computers with last year's thirty thousand, only be able to do eight with this year's. And then we should be done besides Wednesdays and Tuesdays for four or five years. Hopefully longer, the last one was seven, so.
So Slade Building Paving is just on the most damaged areas around the Slade Building, um, for about, for fifteen thousand, to bring them up to some safety standards here. Uh, moving to the next page.
Hey, uh, sorry, I just, just thought of it, 'cause when I walked in, how about, um, Sladeville railing? Did you guys talk about that?
When Monty Tech's ready, they will.
Okay, sounds good, I didn't know that, alright, maybe I did know that.
Great work, just on their time.
Okay, got it.
So proposed capital plan here, this is alternative funding sources, chapter ninety money, um, strap grants, uh, green communities, so forth and so on. So, for this year, we didn't really spend too much time on the, um, the DPW thing, like Evergreen Road, Route sixty-two, Wood Repair, sixty-eight North Construction. These are projects already scheduled, they really don't have anything to do with the capital, capital plan.
Sorry to jump in again, but tomorrow is the bid for the, the MassDOT bid for the Evergreen Road Bridge. So we'll know whether or not, you know, tomorrow at two PM is when the, the, the bids just pop up on the screen, I'll be following it just to see. Um, usually if it's within some sort of close threshold from the estimate, it's a no-brainer and it goes forward to it, but we'll know that tomorrow, sort of, what the bid is and who the, uh, the contractor will be.
That's exciting, and then sixty-eight North is doing this, this in the spring, right?
It's already been, it's already awarded, it's already just waiting for the weather.
So we have, um, I'm gonna let you, Ryan, talk about center school roof, 'cause we didn't really dive into that on the Capital Planning Committee.
So we have a pretty strong update on center school roof, so over school break, uh, the Christmas break, we got the estimate from the feasibility study, which we funded at, at last year's town meeting. So it's approximately two point two million dollars is the estimate with a four-year, four percent escalator, because this would not start until the spring of twenty-two. Carry the two, yep, next year. So, um, if it's approved at town meeting, it would go into, um, bid for the fall, hopefully to start the next summer. Right, so that's why I'm saying twenty-one. Everybody following me?
Twenty-one.
Okay, so there's a four percent escalator in that. So, two point two, we're supposed to be reimbursed at fifty-nine percent of that, which puts our approximate share for the town to bear at approximately nine hundred thousand-ish. Now, not every expense in construction for MSBA is reimbursable, so that's why I'm saying-ish, that can adjust. So the ask will be, um, in this capital plan for a debt exclusion for nine hundred thousand dollars over X years, and we'll provide terms, uh, it could be ten, twenty, probably not thirty, but some type of borrow.
Is that, is that a re- reimbursable grant?
Yes.
So we come up with it, or we borrow for it and then get reimbursed against it?
We've talked to our financial advisors and, and we're not ready for all the details, but we should be able to borrow just the amount we need and pay for it as you go, as we're getting reimbursed.
That'd be better.
So we'd only need to borrow the nine hundred thousand, only, that's a lot of money.
So that would be split up over you.
Yeah.
Marijuana money, funding the school, it'd be great, yeah.
So, so the, the key takeaways from, I, I met with the schools today, we talked about how we can send as much information as possible, but this, this isn't a need, or this isn't a want, it's, it's a need. So the, the roof is gonna go, the MSBA approved this in its first year, which is really rare, and they only do that when it's, when it's necessary to replace it. So, um, if it doesn't go through town meeting, that's gonna signal to the MSBA that the town doesn't want help fixing this, which means we might have to fund the entirety of the project at some point, and that some point is coming very soon. So, instead of borrowing nine hundred thousand, be borrowing the two point two million plus the escalator. So it's not to scare anybody, but there, there's a tremendous amount of help here, and we're gonna spread it out so that tax impact is low, but this needs to be done. Um, there's just no other way to say it.
Just, just, I think we've talked about, I know we've talked about this, just so we're clear, so it's, it's gonna go to town meeting first for a majority? Or two-thirds?
For a borrow, two-thirds, yeah.
Two-thirds, and then it's gonna go to a ballot.
If we want the debt excluded, but we cannot put it in the operating budget without cutting something else. So, debt exclusion would be the recommendation. If you authorize the borrowing, you'd have to squeeze it into the operating budget, which means approximately a hundred, two hundred fifty thousand would have to come out of the budget somehow, which is just not, not possible with, with residents' level of service requirements.
So the, the next two green ones, boiler replacement and lighting upgrades, these both are for the library. The boiler is thirty years old, um, it was last put in at the last renovation of the library in the early eighties. Um, which is actually getting to be forty years old, um.
It is, man.
Um, so it's, uh, it, it's gonna, it's gonna be replaced with something a lot more energy-efficient than it is now. So that's, uh, we're targeting a green communities grant for that. Uh, lighting upgrades, uh, same way in the library, um, we wanna try to replace some of the old fluorescent lights inside the library with, um, with something a little more energy-efficient and, and more aesthetic than they have in there now. And again, we're targeting that for a green communities upgrade. Um, these are both projects that the library had in their capital plan, but, uh, we're moving them to a grant funding mechanism for that. The next two, playground equipment and playground equipment, Rainbow's in playground, four thousand, a hundred fifty thousand. Um, that gets a lot of heavy use, as we all know, our kids have been on that a million times. Um, it's starting to fall apart, it's starting to heave out of the ground, there's, it needs to be replaced. So, what the Parks Commission is looking for is a hundred fifty thousand dollars in s- possible CPA funding, plus or minus some grant funding, um, for complete replacement of the, of the playground. So they're targeting that for this year's town meeting to, to get approved. Um, if it does not get approved, the four thousand dollars is for necessary repairs to maintain safety at the playgrounds on there, so.
One second, I mean, that's their number?
That's their number, that's their number.
There's a couple items that need to go.
Okay.
So, that would do that.
Yeah, so that's.
This would be a multiple-year borrow for CPA, not a one-year hit for that level.
So it's, it's kind of one or the other, it's if we get the new playground, they're not gonna do the four thousand dollars and vice versa. If we don't get the new playground, they're gonna do this four thousand for repairs on that. So, that is our capital plan, um, hopefully it helps you guys, uh, plan budget season a little bit.
Yeah, I wish we had done this long ago. Um, so, so as far, just, I guess, just a sort of off-the-cuff question, um, uh, if, 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 for example, we, uh, went through this and said, you know what, we really, we really can't do the dump truck this year. Not that we're going to, but I'm just throwing it out there, if we can't do the dump, those sorts of scenarios, did you guys toss around that sort of thing? Like how many iterations did you have, or di- did, did you, did you just go through all these sort of, and come to a conclusion that like, this is how we're gonna do it? Or, I mean, it.
Yeah, we, we, we didn't do scenario A or scenario B, what we looked at is just what money do we have available, what are the needs of the departments, and what can we fit in this year if that makes sense for, um, what the department needs, what we can fund, and, uh, what, you know, what makes sense in a timeline. So certainly, you know, we could, if you want us to, we could go back at some other later time if we're having money trouble with this, and we can kinda go over the details of what would be Plan A or Plan B. Um, you know, of course, every department's gonna say what they need is the, is, is most important, um, on there. I know, do you have a, when it trusts us to Francois, do you have an idea on that?
Well, I think one of the things that, that we did do is, uh, we did shift some two thousand twenty-one items further on into the future. Library, very good example, and we took some of the things which were actually in future years and brought them in. So a good example would have been, uh, So a good example would have been, uh, some of the early renovations needed to be done around the foundation, because we thought that that was good investment right up to that versus studies. That were potentially for two thousand twenty-one, we actually moved them all the way down to the, to, to the very end. So I think we did some of that scenario real time. Uh, did we come up with a Plan A or Plan B? No, we did not. We kind of did it as we're going on and started really looking at what made sense, uh, given the needs that were in existence at that point in time. Um, I think to, to, to Mike's point, if we had to go back through this here. Uh, we could do this here, but I think what we came up with is is fairly conservative. Um, there may be a few items here and there that may be shifted for an additional year, but then you run the risk.
Oh yeah, no, no, I'm just wondering about this.
I mean, that's, that's, that's just reality, it's just you patch it up or you, um.
Kick the can.
Kick the can.
Yep. Okay, um, so do you have any, any questions about this?
So just to summarize the, my last part, the final part of the plan, um. Here is in the, in the back is a projected spending summary, so you could s- see this as a preview of my town administrator's budget, but. If the operating budget was gonna come in at nine point seven, and that means our school number was really high, so that's gonna come down. The six percent target would be five hundred and eighty-seven thousand. The debt service would be, you wanna keep it somewhere around three hundred and eleven thousand, which, which we will. Um, you'd need three hundred and twelve thousand in free cash to fund this plan, so. If you go down and, and just project out what we might do with free cash, after we uh, did seventy-five thousand for the town center project at Fall Town Meeting, we're left with five hundred and forty-five thousand certified free cash. Uh, retain a hundred for the operating budget, keep a hundred in reserve by policy, finish the town center ask of seventy-five thousand. And you add in the three twelve needed for this plan, you'd have a deficit of forty-two thousand. Um, and that's without using any operating budget or, um, CPA funds or anything else that deflect costs, so. Um, the CIPC did a really good job of, of creating a doable plan, um, some decisions will have to be made, um, but I don't think it's that far off.
Alright, cool, great start, guys, so appreciate it.
Anytime, so, and uh, you know, we had talked about next year, the year after, when, um, the need may arise for.
Thank you.
Capital for buildings and, and stuff that we'd be happy to help take that on to.
Okay.
Great, nice.
Thanks, alright, and I get to go home.
Thank you.
Looking you.
Okay, so now we've got some contracts that you wanna uh, review and, and consider?
There's, so there's three contracts, um, these are, these have all gone through a pretty extensive procurement process, and I'll, I'll summarize them quickly. So we got a community compact grant to look at our town HR policies. We put this out to bid to six or seven highly reputable HR firms. We ended up uh, with the, the Collin Center being the most responsive and responsible and lowest bid. Um, to come in and work on our HR guidance policies, update everything and train our staff for less than the grant. And to be completed by June, so we're looking to award that contract, which is in your file. The low library roof, this is the, I call it the annex roof, but the roof as you're walking into the basement of the library, this is part of the capital plan. We had, um, one bidder, MABC Construction.
And, and you, I'll.
No, it's not.
It's not there, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I like talking about something, it's not there.
Thank you.
Got ahead of myself. So Central Mass Building and Construction was the only bid, they came in with two options, one would be to repair it. Which would be kind of a temporary patch for forty-three thousand. The new roof came in at six, sixty-seven hundred, I know it's hard to see. Sixty-seven hundred fifty was to, to complete it, I asked the library trustees to weigh in, and they would like to replace the roof, and eleven thousand was appropriated for this. So we have the money to complete this, they're willing to start as soon as the weather allows them to start and fix the, the flashing and the roof problem. And the last one for your consideration is, um, calling it up here, is for the, um. Senior Center, so the Council on Aging is looking to upgrade their senior space, uh, it's difficult for them to store, to work, to, to provide the kitchen services they are. And, um, to create a more aesthetically pleasing space, so they're going to move some of their, um. Their appliances around and, um, add cabinets and add island space. And most of it is coming from the, the Senior Center grant, which fifteen thousand of it remains, and the other six thousand was donated by the friends of the Senior Center. And I just can't talk and call it up at the same time, so give me one second. It's cause it's a PDF, it's hiding on me. So again, we got, um, a lot of interest, but one final bid from, uh, Glenwood Kitchens. Came in, measured the space, was very responsive, reactive, and responsible to their, to their bidding process, uh, we advertised this in all the appropriate places. Feel comfortable with the bid process, um, and it came in at twenty-one eight three three. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of these, uh, they're being recommended to you from the Council on Aging, from the library, and from myself, for the procurement process.
Yeah, I mean, they're doing it all on their own, right, I mean, it's paid for the rest of the grant and then all the friends', uh, contribution, so that's great, I can't wait to see it.
It's gonna be very nice, they're very excited to have it done, they wanted to get it done before Christmas, but we really spent a lot of time on the procurement to make sure it was correct.
They'd be like, Ryan, why are you over here all the time?
Yeah.
Where were you?
You know, it's nice to go over there, play some bingo.
So do we need a motion to award each of these?
All three?
To allow me to sign each three, and we'll get them done, and you'll get reports on them being finished relatively quickly.
I make the motion to award the bids to the, well, the uh, Human Resource Consultant Contract to the Collin Center, the will of the library roof. Repair replacement to the MABC Construction.
Yep.
And the Senior Center Kitchen renovation to Glenwood Kitchens.
Second the motion.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Great.
So we're at all business? We've got the RFP, uh, for the Reagan Hill lots?
Yeah, so I basically wanted to s- you to see this RFP, so this will be approved at, on your meeting on the twenty-seventh, we're getting a lot of correspondence.
Yep.
It's a pretty standard document, just putting them out to see what you want, but what you should consider is any restrictions that you'd like to put on it, so. Should we put in a minimum cost, should we only consider affordable housing? And, and also included in this RFP will be another one for, um, some type of affordable housing proposal for lot two seventeen, which was the board's main target. Was deemed acceptable by the one interested party we have right now, which is Habitat. We do have to generally put out an RFP, they're allowed to bid on that, to provide affordable housing at no cost, I don't know if they'll have a ton of competition there. Um, but these, this would be the start of the sale of this land, so I wanted to give you the RFP, so you can look it over and provide me with any. Uh, input, we'll give you a solid draft to, to debate and uh, potentially approve on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I, I went through it quickly, but di- did you go, did you grab an RFP that we've used for this exact same purpose in the past, or have you, did you go somewhere else for it?
So KP Law had our old one, and they updated it.
Okay. Okay.
So they've seen it and they're following what wants to be, what you want to do.
Alright, so we'll, we'll, we'll get back to you next time.
Okay, I'll go through, um, my report quickly.
Okay.
Okay, for budget update, I have all the department requests, I am currently, uh, compiling them. Uh, meeting with all the departments this month, putting together a solid draft for presentation due on March second, and providing updates on what that's gonna look like throughout that process. Capital plan you saw tonight. Um, sad to say Patrolman Michael Amon's gonna be leaving our police department, he got a job with the Asperham Police Department, which was a good opportunity for him. Uh, we don't like to lose longtime employees, been with us since two thousand fourteen, but we wish him, uh, much success, and I'd like to thank him for service to the community. We've already discussed, you know, how do you replace an officer? Uh, we're gonna put together a committee and have a plan for you, and uh, do, do what's needed to hire the best possible candidate for a full-time position, a very important position in our town. That one was discussed. Tax rate, we've discussed ad nauseam, but that is complete.
Excuse me, Ryan, when's he leaving?
He, he has, um, resigned.
Already, okay, so we're short then.
Effective now. We are.
Okay.
There is obviously a coverage plan, and we have our reserve officers to cover.
Okay.
Uh, we don't expect to hire anyone for a couple months, but it's not uncommon. We wanna take our time with the hire.
Mm-hmm.
Could I?
Going over the tax rate extensively, um, and you were aware of these figures, just wanted to put it out to the community that this is, is now finalized, if they have any questions, to call us. And, uh, tax bills are due, fortunately or unfortunately. Capital project updates, I went over the Center School Roof extensively with you earlier. Um, and then talked about all the contracts that are available, so we got a lot going on with capital. And then, for recognition, I went down and talked to the DPW today, uh, at your request, thanking them for their snow removal work. So the last storm, one thirty-five hours worked consecutively, a hundred and eighty tons of salt, twenty tons of three-in-one sand mix on the dirt roads. And six hundred and thirty-five gallons of fuel to keep our roads the best in the area. This is the second three-day storm, it's really taxing our crew, but, um, the morale was high, they did a great job, I think they're proud of the, of the work they're doing, and we're definitely proud of them.
That's great.
And, uh.
How's their supply of everything at this point, because of this horrible December that we had?
We're a little over halfway through our winter budget in January.
So we should be, we should be expecting a supplemental sometime.
Well, what we're gonna hope for, is that, the weather is beautiful for the rest of January, we have kind of a decent February, and then we start doing maple syrup, so.
On February, yeah. Yeah.
Storm, storm tomorrow night.
Yeah. You just ruined the evening for me, and that's my report.
Thank you. Alright, uh, as, uh, we customarily get to is, uh, we've got a couple more policies, uh.
I'd recommend we move that to the.
Let's push that along then.
Cause it's late.
Alright, we've got some minutes to approve, December sixteenth, I'm not looking at them, does somebody else have who the attendees were?
Uh, I'll move to, uh, accept the minutes. Uh, the, uh, board meeting on December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Stay. Uh, next is, we've got some, uh, some appointments and resignations.
So we gave you information on the resignation of Michael Amon, our patrolman. Um, the Council on Aging is recommending Jeanette Sullivan to serve on the Council on Aging Board, therefore recommendation. Uh, for your appointments and resignations, and also, this came up today, which is why it came up under matters not reasonably anticipated. But we need to appoint an interim plumbing and gas, or an alternate plumbing and gas inspector because of a, a leave that's required, we need this, this position. Ed Tonit serves in Garner in that role, so we need to appoint him here so he can do, uh, do his work. So those three appointments and resignations.
I'll make the motion to appoint, uh, Jeanette Sullivan, Council of Aging.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
I'll, uh, accept the resignation of Michael Amon.
Second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to appoint Ed Tonit as ultimate plumbing, gas inspector.
Second the motion.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
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 Quick committee update, uh, only thing I've got is Wednesday evening, I'll be going to the MRPC. Meeting at six-thirty in Lemonster, which goes over their plan for the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP projects from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-five. Which we are already approved and on for Route sixty-eight North, but which also are a town center project, so it's basically just furthering our, our effort towards and let them know we're. Coming every time we can to make sure that they know, if they've ever gotten an opening, we'll take it as early as possible, so I'll, I'll update everybody of, you know, how that goes. Um, so we've got, uh, an- anything, um, anyone else wants to bring up from the table that wasn't originally contemplated?
Nope.
Uh, public press question and answer, anybody, uh, out there wanna prolong the agony, no?
No, I'm good.
Hey, so I make a motion to move into executive?
Okay. Yep.
Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn from the public meeting and move into executive session. For conduct an executive session pursuant to general law C thirty-eight, paragraph twenty-one, phrase A seven. To comply with or act under the authority of any, of or any general or special law or federal grant in a requirement.
Good night. Good night.
The law cited for this executive session is the open meeting law GLC thirty-eight, uh, twenty-two F. She is periodically reviewing executive session minutes for public release. Executive session minutes to be reviewed are from December ninth, two thousand nineteen, after which we will adjourn from executive session. With no intent to return to the public, I mean, session.
Pat, I mean, any discussion? Pat?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And yes, Chris?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Okay.